Hello.
Dave, um, Jerry, are you guys on? Okay. Alright, so I think we can start the recording. Please.
It started.
Okay, you want the streetlights, Betty, uh, Brenda?
So, we're back in, we're back in public session for the budget hearing. I just want to say before we go on to, uh, Bucky on the streetlights. I just want us to be cognizant that we do have, we've only gotten a quarter way through. And today is supposed to handle all the departments. So if we could be a little bit more efficient, um, uh, going through, it would be very much appreciated. Okay, Bucky, you're up.
Page one eighty-three.
Alright.
One eighty-three, one eighty-three.
So, the streetlight budget is the streetlight budget. I think everyone understands how that's developed. It's a formula that, that multiplies the number of streetlights you have times a, what they call a tariff at the, at PURA. And, uh, that's your bill. This year's bill is in line with the budget, meaning the budget was five oh three. Uh, actuals to date, seven months is, uh, two fifty-five. So, uh, the budget seems, uh, appropriate. Uh, unless PURA changes the tariff for the UI company, that, that, that tariff remains the same. Good?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. I just had a, one, two quick questions. Is there any argument to be made? Cause people feel like they're, you know, people, I, this is a complaint I sometimes hear is like, the electric bill is so, you know, whatever the negotiating with this company and, and maybe it's not relevant here. Um, the tariff you said is what it is. Is there anything that we can do as a community? Is there offsets? And maybe that's not a discussion for this moment, cause it is what it is. And then the LED, are we, is there energy savings and cost analysis? And again, maybe not for here, but I do think it would be interesting for people to know, um, with LED use, if there is any environmental impact or cost savings, cause it's something worth noting.
Okay, that's two questions.
Yeah.
Uh, the bill is the bill. It's, it's, it's established by PURA. It's the same methodology used to develop the biohydrant, uh, cost. Uh, they go to PURA and, uh, they're rewarded certain number of dollars per unit. So, if you want to write to PURA, you can do that. I can tell you that in the wings, we have some mitigation measures that, uh, we are looking at, that we think can be, uh, uh, very helpful in terms of the energy, uh, use in town for more than just streetlights, but for a lot of other buildings. And it can happen quickly. Uh, I don't want to reveal it yet because it may not happen, so, uh, so that's that part about it. Have there been any savings? You know, three years ago, your budget was seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And as soon as the LED lights were put in, it was reduced to just over five hundred thousand dollars. So, yes, there are savings.
Not to mention the impact on the environment, and those are things worth noting. Thank you.
I'm all good on this budget.
So, Bucky's got the next, um, two items, um, so.
Page one, page one ninety-seven.
Page one ninety-seven.
Okay, page one ninety-seven is the Public Works Administration budget. You'll see that there is a nine and a half percent increase in this budget. Uh, that's largely due to personnel. Uh, just as an oversight for all of these budgets, uh, with the exception of personnel, all of the line items are virtually the same as last year. It's the same budget you approved last year. There has been some, uh, uh, changes in personnel. Uh, for the Public Works budget, if you look at the salary page, uh, we have, uh, very close to last year's budget. We have, looks like we've, uh, right-sized the director's salary here. Uh, and, uh, uh, we've reduced, uh, the assistant director's salary. Uh, but we've added a finance person. And this is the, uh, the individual that I have been recommended, recommending since I began to do the capital plan and realize the volume, uh, of capital that, uh, is, is facing us because of the needs of the town. Uh, I felt that, uh, one of the weak points was that the financial piece of this and, and some of the projects that I reviewed, uh, did not have adequate oversight. And, uh, uh, in other positions, uh, one of the most, uh, valuable people in the office was, was that individual who oversaw the budget. So, with the volume of capital we have to deliver and the amount of dollars that, uh, are involved, the first selectman, uh, saw fit to add that position. Um, and I think it's, it's a, it's a worthy, uh, uh, position to ask for and be awarded.
So, I got a couple of questions on this. Um, do we have a job description yet for this position?
Well, you know, I've had, I have the job descriptions from other places that I've worked. Uh, if it, if it's approved, it's, it's, we have the semblance of a job description.
Can I, can I?
I don't know what they have. Yep.
Yeah, can I, can I get a, look at what one might look like, please? Um, here's, here's my concern. This is an area that I'm obviously very, very familiar with in terms of finance. And I do think this position was probably called out, was it not? Related to the audit of what happened with the fill pile issues and the like? Wasn't this one of their? I don't know that this was a specific recommendation, but I want to understand how it plays into that.
It was, it was Tom. And just to be clear, um, you know, obviously the reorganization took, me and my administration literally, we, we were working on it before it'd be repacked, so we would be prepared. But Bucky came on, he talked about his position he had in prior, uh, when he worked in prior administrations and how it was helpful, and it makes sense to do based on what we learned in the audit. So, it's not a new position, it's replacing another position, but it is a new position.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a new job description. I, I totally understand, and I think it's, it's probably high time.
We're gonna base it on what Bucky had in the past and what he needs for his department.
Well, here's my concern. I'm currently working with a client and had to build out a financial staff for that client. Um, and it's very, it's a very challenging, uh, job market for employers when it comes to qualified finance personnel right now in roles like this. I, my only question is, does a, does, is seventy-five thousand dollars the appropriate salary level for this? Are you going to be able to find somebody? Now, clearly, I don't know municipal, but I know accounting and I know finance. I don't know municipal in terms of hiring prices, is what I mean. But I know accounting and finance and, and people are going for a lot higher salaries than that right now.
So, I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that, uh, the last two people I had working with me would not take a full-time job because they had young children. They just wanted to work thirty hours a week. And both jobs were around forty thousand dollars. One was a CPA, another was an MBA, and they were happy as hell to have the job. So, you're right, you're right, Tom. Uh, it depends on the individual. And if a superstar walked in the door, I would advocate you pay that person, uh, what you have to pay them, because there's no one more valuable in the office, uh, than that individual.
Yeah, and that's why I wanna, and that's, Bucky, why I want to see the job description. Because I want to take a look at that and compare that to what I'm seeing out in the marketplace, um, for, for the price point, for the position. I think based on the fact this was a, a DPW audit recommendation, uh, the fact that it is somewhat commonplace in other towns, as you've pointed out, and the fact that we've got, uh, millions of dollars of exposures related to the fill pile, et cetera, um, I, I do think this is a warranted position. I want to make sure we have the right job description, the right person, and the right pricing for it. That, that's really what I'm not quote-unquote concerned about, but I want to focus on.
May I add something?
If I could just jump in, Tom.
Yeah.
Um, I, you, I can assure you, I put your mind at ease, that, uh, those are the things that I'm handling and working on with our HR department.
I know.
And we think that that, that amount, um, will get us where we need to be. And if, if, if so happens that we can't necessarily, uh, get anybody for that amount, although we do believe we can based on Bucky's prior experience, um, we, we, we will have to come back and ask for additional money. But I think right now, um, we're on the right track.
So, just, A, I think the position is warranted and all that. Just as a frame of reference, okay? I know the accounting firms are paying new hires. Uh, some of the bigger firms in this area are paying new hires right out of college, between seventy-five and eighty-five thousand dollars, right out of college. I don't know if that's what you're looking for. I don't know what this position is. Uh, but I know that's what the marketplace is in, in some instances here. That's all.
Alright, so in an effort to try to get through this, uh, list that we have, I'm sure Bucky can talk to you about this offline, some of the things he utilized in the kind of,
Yep.
skill steps he used in prior, uh, jobs that he had.
Yep, I agree.
And I, if I may, real quick, I would just like to again make the case for why it's really important to see this particular hire within the context of the broader plan for reorganization. Um, you bring to this Mr. Marsilio, like, incredible amounts of experience, and I trust, but this is also about building out, um, for, uh, a plan for the future and long-term and, and building out a metric and an, and an org chart that can exist in spite of you and in spite of your great experience that you bring to the table. So, I'm not questioning, um, the need for it or the dollar amount. I leave that to this other conversation. But I just wanted to point out, in the, it would be helpful in the context of a broader plan to understand this. But, um, again, I understand that is forthcoming. Just wanted to make that comment. And thank you for your, your work and stepping in, in the way you did.
Okay.
I have no specific questions.
Go ahead, Bucky.
I'm good on the admin side.
Um, so, we're on, we're on page two oh two. Uh, the reorg for the entire department is two percent lower. Um, again, you'll see that the changes are specific to payroll, consequently, social security. And the only increases are the anticipated increases in, in gasoline and fuel. Uh, and if you go to the personnel summary, you will see that, um, the changes in the, um, the changes in the, uh, in the payroll are, are reflected in the, um, in the reduced budget. So, there was a number of positions that were openings that were recalled, we, we, uh, that, that were, came from the retirement, the early retirement program. Uh, one of those, two of those weren't replaced. One of them was replaced with a, a lower, uh, uh, level position. Uh, and, um, the rest of it remained, uh, just about the same.
So, when you say lower level, like the area of mechanic? It feels like with so many conversations about the trucks and being old and some of that, like, the chief mechanic, for instance, is not necessary if we have a more junior person? Is that an example of what you mean?
So, we're gonna wait and see. So, we're going to replace the chief mechanic with a junior entry-level mechanic. Instead of merely, uh, uh, appointing someone as chief mechanic and then having to hire an entry-level mechanic. So, what we're gonna do is hire the entry-level mechanic. And then out of that universe of, of, uh, employees, uh, we're going to enter into a meritocracy and a needs assessment to see if we need a chief mechanic, number one, and number two, who that should be.
Okay, it makes sense. And one final question, I think, for me, is mostly a curiosity. There is a large percent increase in percentage, but not in number, in laundry and linen. What's that about?
Oh, that's, uh, that was my, uh, when I first arrived, I, uh, I noticed that there was a, uh, very lax implementation of, uh, high-vis wear, meaning, uh, the high-vis vests, jackets, uh, and the like. And I implemented a program where everyone had to wear high-vis, uh, clothing for safety reasons. It's, I, I mean, I've seen, uh, what happens if you don't do that, and it's not pretty. So, um, that reflects the need to buy new, uh, uniforms for, and, and new, uh, high-vis, uh, equipment for the workers. It's a safety, uh, requirement.
And a final comment, um, with regards to a lens of sustainability. And I guess maybe it's an overall philosophical question. Is, are there, where possible, without, within the framework of the line items in this budget, um, considerations being made towards sustainability and clean energy and so on and so forth? Or can you comment on to how? And if now is not the moment, yeah, go ahead.
The answer to your first question is yes, emphatically. And the answer to your second question is, I would like to defer to that answer until I have something a little more, uh, a little more solid to share with you. But we are pursuing it, we're pursuing it all the time. But we have some very, very exciting things that we're gonna be presenting very shortly, uh, that, uh, I think address your issue.
Thank you very much.
Alright, I've got a few questions. Um, let's go to the utilities. You spoke to it. Talk to me about the assumptions you made on fuel costs. And were those assumptions that are used throughout this budget, not just in your departments?
Okay, finance generally, uh, factors in something in fuel cost and, and, uh, utility rates.
I thought they used to, I actually thought they used to work with the department head in DPW to come up with it, or with purchasing. I, I could be wrong about that.
I think purchasing would probably be a more valid, um, source. Uh, we, we could give you usage, but the crystal ball for,
Well, did you give him, did you give him usage?
I think, what I think happened here is, I think, usage increased a little, but the cost of fuel went down. Now, usage increased because of COVID, because we did not put two people in trucks. So, we had to double the use of, of trucks. Instead of having four of, four fellows go out in two trucks, we had to go in four trucks. So, there was probably more usage this year, so it could be an aberration. Uh, in terms of the unit cost, uh, you know, we have the experience of the year, and we have some idea that it's gonna go up next year. That's the best I can tell you, Tom.
Thank you. The, um, Jared, I see you up there. Can you, uh, opine on this? And then I want to go back to something else.
Sure. The rates for any of the utilities, commodities were, uh, done townwide. And so, we, uh, we supplied the rates and asked the, each of the departments for their usage amount and came to the number.
Did you take into account, what, yeah, did you take into account the, the whole comments regarding COVID and usage? Or no? This year?
We, I, I, I believe the departments that were giving us their usage took that into account if it was a factor in their operation.
Can we just check on that, just to make sure? Cause I'm seeing some large increases in these utility costs. I'm not saying they're wrong, I just want to understand them. The other thing is, and it'd be interesting, I, I think Mr. Bremer was working on something on this at one point. But we've done a lot of investment in kind of green energy, solar, all that kind of stuff the last few years, which we've been very proud to do. Now, when we've done that, um, we've always heard that there was gonna be cost savings in some instances, can, um, significant cost savings from doing that. I, I haven't seen a report on that. Um, I don't know if somebody there can comment, but what do, what do we know about our efforts on that side and what we've been able to save?
I can't speak specifically to the amount of savings. I can say that we did, that, uh, the first elect woman and Tom Bremer, um, did do a, ask for an audit to be done, an internal audit to be done on it. And, uh, that, that has been done. And I know that, uh, during the board for the finance meeting that's upcoming, our internal auditor is gonna do a report on all the different audits that she has done over the past year or so, and so that will be part of it.
Mr. Bremer, do you care if, yeah, Mr. Bremer, if you're on, do you care to comment at all?
He stepped out for a minute.
Sure, he just ran out. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, I would, I would like to hear that same report, just because it's been a concerted effort that we've had over the last number of years. So, I'd like to understand that a little bit. So, if we could get some follow-on on the utilities across the town to see whether there's a rate or volume and just confirm that, I would be most appreciative. Um, because like I said, if you look at even the utilities, electric, it's, well, that's pretty flat. It's up over twenty by a lot. Um, but I just want to see where we're going here, what the driver is, if you don't mind. And I see the motor vehicle fuel has gone up quite a bit. So, I'd just like to understand that. The staffing is fine for me. I would like to go through the capital outlay and understand that a little bit, if you don't mind. But I'll, I'll defer, I don't know if Nancy has anything or Brenda has anything to say.
That's fine.
Well, it's my budget, Tom. I've got not much to say.
Alright.
I've got questions. I want to put together.
There you go.
But, but yeah, I hear you, I hear what you're saying about this. This has been a longstanding issue, and, uh, Tom Bremer met extensively with Ed Bowman over many months and trying to get their, uh, minds around, um, you know, all the, the, the savings that were said we were having based on all the clean energy stuff. But it's, that's a really detailed conversation, and I think that's something that we could put on maybe a board of selectmen agenda for another time.
I, I agree, Brenda. I completely agree. But I would like to do that, cause it is, and look, these projects will continue to come up, and green energy's fine. And in fact, you know, I'm on the state of Connecticut's Green Bank, but I do want to see what the financial impact of it is, based on what we were told originally, so.
Yeah, we can do that at another time, for sure.
Yeah, let's go to the, um, so the Public Works operation, the capital outlay. Um, questions for you on this. The, the way this used to be was the numbers indicated priority, with obviously number one being the highest priority and number ten being the least priority in this case. Is that still the case here? Are these stack ranked?
I do not think so. I think that, um, these are prioritized to this extent, Tom.
What does that mean? Sorry.
There were, there were more items requested than you see on the sheet by about a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And once, once we were successful in, uh, in, uh, the capital budget, uh, and we were formulating this budget, I went back and I said to Jeff in fleet maintenance, you know, we've gotta cut a couple hundred thousand dollars out of this budget. So, I, he went in and, and he developed this. Um, so if you, if you, if you want some input here, here's what I have for you. Numbers four and five were asked for last year and were not funded. Uh, the miscellaneous equipment is, are, those are those items we use every single day that just, uh, have to be replaced in the course of the year. Uh, the second one, uh, is a utility body drunk, uh, truck, uh, which replaces a, uh, a two-ton vehicle, so it's a substantial vehicle. It's got a hundred and seventy-one thousand miles on it. Number three has a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles on it. Uh, number six is another, uh, dump truck, and I believe that's a mason dump truck. It's one of those trucks that doesn't have a lot of mileage put on it, but it goes to a site every day, and they, they'll use that to carry masonry and the like, and then, uh, do their work and then bring it back. Uh, the, a, air compressor is an air compressor, it's replacing one that's, you know, quite old. Uh, number eight is, my understanding is that it's a, uh, one of those little, uh, vehicles that, that got stolen, and they, they got it back, but it was pretty damaged. And they use that for maintenance on the beach, and then you have, uh,
Is that a similar vehicle? Is that the ones that also, do they rake the beaches at all, or no?
No, no, that isn't, Tom. That, that is, uh, a little four-wheel-drive guy that, that they pick up trash on the beach, but they don't, they don't haul, uh, the beach rake with that. You need a bigger vehicle than this to haul that beach rake around. Uh, but this would be to, uh, maybe pick up a trash can here or there, uh, empty a trash can, it's overflowing, throw a couple bags on, on it, and, uh, and, and do general maintenance around the beach. And the last two are, uh, are for, uh, mowing and, uh, and grooming.
Well, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question on the last two. Um, maybe some of the others, but specifically the last two. I thought a lot of our field maintenance item, I, I thought that was outsourced to third-party vendors.
That's true. That's true. I, uh, I know it's not all outsourced, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm still trying to get my arms around what, what, uh, park areas are ours and what park, what park areas are farmed out. And, uh, so I'm, I, I know generally what they are, but it's just something that's seasonal, so I haven't been able to put eyes on it and see exactly what, what's happening, if you can understand that.
I do, I actually, I do understand that. I'm just trying to figure out if we need to buy these items, if we're outsourcing them. And I, I had heard, um, you know, you hear through scuttlebutt and stuff that sometimes our vendors are using our equipment to do work. And that's something that if we're outsourcing it, I would like them to be using their equipment as opposed to our equipment. Um, so I, I saw this, and that immediately spurred that in my, um, in my thought process.
Well, that's news to me, and I can assure you that I will be looking into that.
I, yeah, and I have no idea, like I said, put that under, chalk that under, you know, people see me around town and say, "Do you know?" And I don't know whether they have valid information or not, you know what I mean?
I value, I value that input, and I will, um, I can tell you, I will be watching out for that.
Yeah, I'd look for that, and I'd look at the small power equipment too, cause I've heard similar.
Okay.
Now, this has been aligned with, I think you said this, this has been aligned with the capital budget that's already been, uh, moved forward, that has you buying about three-point-five million dollars or so worth of trucks over the next two to three years, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and these are the trucks that are under a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, these are the under a hundred thousand dollars and have generally, if you're lucky, have a ten year life.
Yeah, I understand. All right. I'll let that go now. Thank you.
So, Tom, just to clarify, you know, obviously, there was a lot of deferred purchases on trucks, on a whole bunch of things for a many number of years. And so what we're trying to do, as we mentioned during the capital project, do catch up on the bigger ones and also on the smaller ones now. They put together a list that, you know, they this is what these guys do. This is what they put together. I trust them. I had asked Bucky to shave off some money because I thought that the capital outlay was a little too big. And I also asked that of Chief Calamart as well, because they were the biggest drivers in the capital outlet. So that's why they shaved off the money there. Not that we didn't need those things. I was just trying to keep keep our costs down because I didn't want to hit people or hit our residents with too big of a tax increase. So I've come back wherever I could possibly do so.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. Thank you. I'm good on the rest of this budget.
Okay. And the next one is what, Jared?
The next one is two twenty seven solid waste and recycling.
Yep.
Okay, so the same rule applies here. The budgets are virtually the same as the budget approved last year. No big change. There's been major changes in the personnel. The manager and the coordinator both left. And we are, we have plans that are still being formulated as to how to pick up the the burden that remains. I have I have pretty, I have a high level of confidence that I know how to do this. And so we stand by this reduction in in the in the regular salary.
And again, I absolutely respect your the breadth of experience you bring to this. The question is in the short term, are there concerns about where there'll be holes in terms of of those reductions or how it will be compensated for?
I'm I'm sorry, Nancy. Your question was, are there concerns?
Well, what the concern, how how those positions being eliminated are going to impact the day to day in the short term until you do figure that out or until it is something is put in place.
Okay. So I don't have any concern. I I oversaw all of this this budget myself and Trumbull, and it was not only for Trumbull, but it was for three towns. And I didn't have a coordinator and I was my own manager. And once you get it started and you get the right people in place for the day to day operations, it becomes a matter of filing reports to DEEP and monitoring the subcontractor. Subcontractor is the same subcontractor we've had there for thirty five years. And they know what to do. You know, we have to rehabilitate that building, but for the most part, the operations per se, I have a high level of confidence that we're going to be able to address whatever needs there are there.
I I really do mean in the short term. Until that time, is there will there be a hole in the short term as as those things are put into place?
I don't know what they would be. I mean, we have we have a staff. The operator is the operator. There's no problem with the operation. There might be a report or two or a billing that might be a little late, but we're going to deal with that. That we can.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Something on the reorganization there, Nancy. Mike Zambroski was the solid waste and recycling coordinator. He took the early retirement package. We're going to be merging that position into the assistant public works director position because it's a job that can be handled by that position. And so currently Ed Bowman is filling in at part time in his prior position until and we are seeking to hire a new assistant public works director, and Bucky is actively engaged in that process. But other than that, as Bucky said, we have a lot of bases covered until we get to that point.
And I would refer then again to the opportunity where the recycling piece and the sustainable piece, there you know, there is that opportunity there. So thank you. I have no further questions.
I I have one question on this. So this is this goes to we have the wastewater treatment facility and all that issue going on. We have a variety for a variety of different reasons of open positions. Are we going to be able to move forward with that project in a timely enough manner, given the the turnover that's going on right now? And I know some of it was planned and some of it is is due to other, let's say, outside circumstances.
Bucky should be able to.
I need the hard I mean, I mean, the hardening project. And then for years and years, we've been talking about the the rebuild of the entire plant. And I I just, we've had a fair amount of turnover in these positions as we've gone through this discussion of is it going to be seventy million? Is it going to be ninety million? I just want to know kind of how we're managing that in the short to midterm where you rebuild the team.
Okay. So and Bill, you can weigh in anytime you'd like on this, but let me start by saying.
Okay.
Before the hardening project will resume in another thirty days. And we have every expectation that that will be done midsummer complete. And in terms of the 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 facility itself, we have one major step to take before we go any further with anything down there. And that is to do all the underground testing and have the entire site completely known to us as to what we're going to encounter before we go any further. Because this has been nightmarish. Bill Bill will tell you every time you put a shovel in the ground down there, it's problematic. So to me, it makes no sense to proceed with a design of anything down there until you're absolutely certain of what you're getting into. And that's where we are right now. But I I I see that that the capital budget reflects that that all of these projects will be done or or are on the capital plan. And what my job is here is to ensure that we have staff here that will enable us to construct these projects and have them come in on time and in budget. And we're going to need some internal people to do that. We're going to need a capital projects leader in the office here to review those purchase orders and the and the requisitions and and everything. There's there's an extensive program here that this town needs and through through the boards and commissions in this town, they realize that now's the time to get these done. So so it's a lot of money. And I feel obligated to make sure that it's that that money is well spent. So that's where we are in my eyes in terms of the construction at that site. There are a lot of question marks yet.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further with Mr. Marsilio, I would move to water pollution control authority, and Bill Norton is on the line.
Yes.
Two eighty nine is the page on the budget book?
Brenda?
Hello?
Yeah, this is Roger O'Tory. I wanted to comment on the solid waste.
Oh, okay. You want to comment on solid waste? Okay, you don't have to yell. You could.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Okay, go go right ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm I'm Roger O'Tory with at thirteen ten Melville Avenue. And during nineteen, two thousand seventeen, between February and May, I was one of the scale house operators down there. And having cut out all these department supervision and administration people, I think you're going to have a problem. It's not just filing a couple of reports to deep. It's not just dealing with one or two things. There's a large volume of things that occur down there. When I was down there, we were taking out four forty foot tractor trailer trucks of trash each day. I don't know what Trumbull is, but I can probably figure that it was much less than what we do in Fairfield. We have issues with the haulers. Those are the people with the garbage trucks. We have issues with the the company Enviro, Enviren, or whatever they call themselves now. It's a lot of onsite inspection and review and basically getting in people's faces to make sure they're doing the right thing. It can't be done out of an office at town hall. That's why I think it's it's a bad mistake to get rid of everybody. I mean, you can take care. There should be at least one person who's a supervisor in that table of organization. That'll also you only have four scale house operators part time. What used to happen was Audrey, who was the coordinator, used to fill in on our lunch breaks. And also, if one wanted to go on vacation, they needed to have somebody to fill in. And I know she was filling in for the like third or fourth position for a while down there. I I just think that to cut out everything and to put in a custodian placeholder thing in there is sort of giving the wrong idea and the wrong observation as to what solid waste is. Okay, so that's all.
Thank you. But we do have it covered, and we do intend, we were just talking about the solid waste and recycling director position.
I hope so.
We intend to have someone there as well.
Can I respectfully ask Mr. Marsilio, is it, do you have a follow up to that thought by way of encouragement of what Brenda is just saying?
I'm aware of I'm 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 aware of Mr. O'Tory's issues. In Trumbull, it was a regional transfer station. We had more tonnage than Fairfield has. You have thirty three thousand tons. We had almost thirty seven thousand, Monroe, Easton, and Trumbull. So I know what the volumes are. I know what the we had the for many years, we had the same operator in Enviro. And I know what it takes to operate the transfer station. And you are right. You know, you need constant vigilance, but but and we intend to do that. And we will provide that. And we will, we're expecting to have a town employee there pretty regularly as needed. And I'll take care of it. We'll do it.
And just to add to that, Nancy, the assistant public works director isn't going to be sitting at a desk all day either.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
We're going to have new improved employees doing a whole lot more than they were ever doing before. I can guarantee you that. They're going to be good. All right, Mr. Norton, you are up.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm here to present the Water Pollution Control Authority budget. As you can see, it's a slight degree decrease, point zero eight percent, roughly a flat budget. Most of that reductions in our capital outlay budget, we had a large hundred and seventy thousand dollar item last year for our flights and chain in our primary tanks that we have received. We they haven't been installed yet. We need some good weather to start doing that inside these tanks. So we reduced that. We also replaced the compressor last year. That's not in there and one vehicle, one truck. We have some other things in there and air handling for this year. Bobcat that's used in our composting operation that is utilized four or five hours each day, at least five days to six days a week. Other than that, most light items have remained the same, except for our maintenance and repair of equipment has gone up a little bit. As Selectman Flynn said, you know, looking at the design of the new new system and the upgrade, a lot of this equipment has reached its engineering lifespan. So it's getting more and more difficult to keep it operating. So with that, some of these costs are going up, and that's that's one of those costs. Right now, we do have a fine screen down that's going to cost us in excess of fifty thousand dollars just in parts. We're doing all the labor ourselves that that so that saves town quite a bit of money that we're capable of doing that stuff in house where there's nowhere we're heading profit for a contractor to do it. So we're doing that, as I said, in house. As I said, most of the budget's flat. Basically, as I said, most other items, you know, where the remain the same. And I just touched on the two main items. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I would love to talk to you, not approaching this as my Water Pollution Control Authority Commission status, but knowing how much you guys have going on and knowing how much how many projects are coming down the line and knowing how how much our commission, the volunteer commissioners are working on these projects outside of of the monthly meetings. Is your budget accurately reflecting the ability to handle all of the projects that are coming down the pike? Because there are a lot of them and big ticket items.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And I I believe we are because this is basically the operation and maintenance budget. This isn't the capital budget. So
Right.
Those are funded through other sources, not through this. So I think this is a fair representative of what we need to operate and maintain the facility.
Okay, so. Thank you. I have further questions.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with this one. I'm concerned as well just about the go forward projects. I know it's not in this budget, but just in general. Making sure, I know you guys work closely with DPW and town operations. And just we have so many moving pieces in those areas that I want to make sure we we don't drop the ball on planning for a very large scale capital improvement project that we've been talking about, it seems like for six or seven years.
Just to reaffirm what John said earlier, we're going to have to look at a site wide environmental impact study where it's going to look at all of the soils and analysis, not only the soils and the groundwater and everything that's basically under that blacktop. The only good aspect of that is there is not going to be a lot of digging involved with the with the upgrade project. There's only really one building that's going to be erected for our our influent and our pumping influent pumping and screen and grit removal.
So when is that? When's the environmental impact study? When's it starting? When's it done?
That's a good question, Selectman Flynn. I don't think there's a timeframe on that right now. But that's would have to be done initially. Could be could be part of the design. Could be one of the first aspects and incorporated design of upgrade.
Who's responsible? I know ultimately it's the commissioner, I would assume, but who's responsible for doing all that work and putting that together so we can get moving on it?
Obviously, we'd, we'd have to be overture all the town bodies to get that, that design and environmental impact, uh, statement approved, whether it's through bonding or.
And that, but who's the, who's the staff? Who's the person to congratulate on staff, uh, is part of the town government, not the elected bodies? That's, that's, who's shepherding this? Who gets up in the morning and works on this every day?
Uh, I believe, uh, one of those hats would be me.
Right.
I think I, I would be the, basically the boots on the ground. I'm there, I'm the one that's there every day overseeing that.
Yep.
I've administered to, uh, to these upgrades to two other facilities in excess of, uh, forty-five million dollars. So I'm very familiar with these upgrade projects.
Okay, so what's, okay, but what's the timeline then? I get, I get your credentials. I'm not questioning you at all, please. I just don't know what the timeline is for this. Like I said, it's, it's, this, this project is one of those projects that, um, seems to have been through the course of, and this isn't Mrs. Kupchak's administration, this has been for quite some time. It's been kind of, it starts, it goes away, it restarts, we change people, it starts again, and then we decide we need to do this. I mean, maybe it's not for this meeting, but it's just, I, I want to know, like, you know, what's the progression here? And to, by your own admission, I just asked, what's the timeframe for this? You're the guy boots on the grounds and you don't know the timeframe for this. And I'm just trying to get, you know.
Let me give you a quick, uh, vision of what's been going on and where we're at this point.
Please, yeah.
Obviously, the town several years ago hired great peers to do the, uh, facilities plan. That facility plan was completed back in two thousand seventeen. Was it, uh, submitted to the state, the EEP for approval? Uh, we were, we received the approval probably back in mid-two thousand nineteen. Uh, the next step was to go for a scope of services with the EEP. We submitted that, um, late two thousand twenty. Uh, and then we received, uh, which is astronomical, like two, two weeks later, we received approval for the, the scope of services. So now we move ahead, uh, to, to, uh, uh, an area where we can go ahead and approve the design. Uh, the design is going to be placed on the WPCA agenda this month. So for the March meeting, that will be placed on the WA, uh, WPCA, uh, agenda for discussion. I don't know if they'll approve it to move it forward, but there'll be discussion this month. And then, uh, then we'll go from there.
But what about the environmental impact study? Is that part of the design?
Excuse me, Tom. Bill, can you share that information with the board? I know Nancy's on it, but can you share when that meeting is? It sounds like Tom would love to sign in and hear more about that. When is it?
Sure, I, uh, I don't have this calendar in front of me, but it's usually the third Wednesday of the month.
Could you send it to the Board of Selectmen?
Absolutely.
Just send it that way. Everybody will get it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All that information, all that information will be presented during that meeting?
Uh, yes, it will be part of that meeting to, for, uh, discussion. I'm not sure if it will move, uh, any further than that.
Right, right, right. Understood that.
Well, you could learn a lot, you know, a lot of the answers to your questions could probably be answered at that meeting. Sounds like a good meeting.
See, John has his hand up.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah.
From what I could, just from someone who landed here from another planet recently, uh, no one ever anticipated the problems in that area that emerged due to the Phil pile issue.
Right. I agree.
The, 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 this, I've never, I've never seen or heard of anything like this where every single shovel full of everything is, is, uh, suspect and has to be tested and, and everything. So this has kind of slowed down. And when we're ready to, um, uh, engage in a delivery process per se, uh, and go to design and, and begin this. One thing I hate, and I'm sure you feel the same way I do, I don't like surprises. I want to know upfront when, what something's gonna cost. And I want to make sure that, uh, everything that could be done, uh, prior to the project is done. And to ensure that. So that's where we are right now. Uh, we have, uh, I believe Laura Pooley is, is requested a, uh, a budget to complete the testing of the entire site. Uh, and, uh, hopefully that's gonna be done by the end of this summer. At that time, when we see what we have, we know what we're facing, it would be appropriate then to begin discussing the next phase, which is the renovation of, of, of that facility. And then there's, there has to be discussions beyond that into delivery methods and, uh, and the like.
Yeah, no, I, I completely appreciate what you're saying, a- as well as in, including the fact that we've had, let's call them unforeseen circumstances. All that being said, um, that is just even more of a reason to be very buttoned up over who owns what and how we get it, how we get it done. And again, it's, I've heard similar comments made over the past number of years, and it just has never seemed to move forward with, uh, the speed with which we, we thought it might. So, uh, appreciate it. I look forward to learning more and hearing more during that meeting. So thank you.
And it's like, I think your concerns or timeline was reflected by Tom Bremer, too. He was one of the ones who said we either have to do something or get this project going, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. And I haven't talked to Tom about that, but that doesn't surprise me. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, if there's nothing further, um, for Mr. Norton, I'd like to move on to engineering with Bill Hurley.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Appreciate it.
Hey, can everyone hear me? Okay?
Oh, of course, Bill.
Yep, all right, thanks.
What page are you on?
Two fourteen.
Twelve. Two twelve.
Oh, two twelve, okay. Two twelve for the message, two fourteen for the, uh, budget, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Selectmen and Selectwomen. Uh, basically, engineer, uh, presented last year's, uh, budget with the exception of, uh, fuel and software price increases. A little bit high on the percentage, but relatively small amount increases. And, um, that was for, uh, yeah, IT, uh, software and the, uh, motor vehicle fuel. And then, uh, we are requesting a van, an engineering van for the capital. Um, it was, uh, it was an eighteen-year-old caravan, uh, that was taken out of service due to the, uh, safety concerns. Uh, basically had a broken frame. Um, the van is utilized for office and fieldwork and holds all sorts of, uh, water and soil testing equipment. Cones, uh, surveying rods, um, water buckets, construction signs, um, and, um, distance wheels, whatever we, we have a need for engineering or for a surveying. Um, so, um, if I'm here for any questions, if anyone has any.
Mine are personnel-related. Um, just want to talk about some of the switch-ups that's happened. The addition of the, uh, the senior civil engineer versus the CAD specialist. Can you talk about some of that re- organizing?
So I can answer that, Nancy.
Okay, thanks.
Um, yes, that was part of my reorganization plan. And, and just to be clear, that this reorganization plan is based on many months of meetings with department heads and talking to them extensively about their department. So, um, Laura Pooley, who is, uh, an amazing engineer in our engineering department, is going to be retiring in this year or so. And the amount of work that comes into that department, um, is, is significant. And Bill Hurley, while he's really great, he's like a one-armed paper hanger in there, and he's doing a lot of work. And frankly, we need, we need three engineers, uh, to handle the amount of work that comes into the town. And so that was a decision made, uh, to be able to move our town forward and to build our bench. Cause I know Mr. Hurley, you know, he's not too far away from retiring, maybe either. Someday, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, you have to, you have to be prepared, um, to have people, you know, experienced in understanding what we're doing. And so that decision is made because of that.
And absolutely appreciate that, Bill Hurley, you function like four people, not one. So maybe there's something we don't know here, cause I've seen, I've seen you in action. Uh, but then in terms of like some of the software technology, uh, specialized, specialized skills that some people had previously brought to the table, is the assumption that those things will be taken up by the, the addition of an engineer, of a, of a senior engineer?
Correct.
Okay.
So this was put together through discussions with the department head, as well as the first select woman's office and chief of staff and chief admin officer to agree on what this reorganization looked like?
Absolutely, and our HR department.
And this was, um, go ahead, Mr. Hurley, I want to hear from you. Go ahead.
Uh, I, um, I, yeah, as part of, uh, the reorganization plan, uh, John and I are compiling a, a plan of, uh, assignment of duties, um, you know, personnel and, and additional training.
Okay, so this is again, one of those, we're not, you're not going down in headcount, you're adding a different position? Is that how we should read this?
Yes.
Seven people, different skill sets. Set.
Additional skills.
Okay.
I have no further questions. Thank you. I understand.
I do, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if Mr. Conley signed on yet, um.
I am on, Brenda, if you can hear me.
Oh, sure, yep. Okay, Tom's gonna, um, talk about the building.
What page?
Yeah, I, I'm not yelling, am I? I can never tell how, people say I have a very, uh, strong voice, so I may be yelling, so I apologize.
Page two oh nine, everyone.
How you doing, Tom?
I am well. How is everybody? Thanks for having me. Um, I, I'm not really sure where you want to start here, maybe revenue, maybe, um, uh, we don't really have much increase in the, in the budget line. Um, there is another, um, it looks like another administrative sub, a, a floater in there. I'm hoping that that speaks to my request for a, um, blight officer, um, to handle some of the administration of that, um, department. That will help all three departments, by the way, um, fire marshal, health, and ours here. Um, it has become a, a huge task for us to get the information out, to get our meetings together. And it's, um, it's a bit of a, uh, challenge month to month, so, um, I think that that's really the one, one big thing that would, um, help everybody out here. So I'm hoping that that, that, um, request can be, uh, met and, uh, help us with that challenge.
Sorry, Tom, hi, thank you for everything. Um, what departments did you say that floater supported? Fire marshal?
So, um, so we, we, um, uh, we operate the blight, the, the, uh, condemnation blight, um, uh, for the town of Fairfield.
Yeah.
Those, uh, three, three departments, fire marshal, health department, and building department are on that committee. So we all go out and do the inspections. Um, so we run between, you know, fifteen to twenty-five, um, um, blight complaints that we have to follow up month to month. So we have a meeting and, uh, we have to get paperwork out each time. Um, you know, whether it's, um, uh, you know, depending on where we are in that, in that condemnation blight, uh, situation. So there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of administration, um, and I was just hoping that, uh, as well as, uh, all three of our departments, very, very, um, key departments in the town, I believe, have to go out on a, uh, monthly basis, um, to inspect. Um, and again, you know, with health and COVID, they're, they're absolute, absolutely stretched to the limits. Uh, building department, uh, I'll speak for my department, is stretched right out. Um, I don't think we've seen volume like this, um, on the residential level ever before. Um, uh, we are still, just a, just a, um, um, a note, we are still installing swimming pools in February, so, well, I guess it's March now. So pools have run through the winter. It's crazy, so.
And.
Just, just, Nancy, for a minute, um, and I, I know that Tom has been talking about this position for some time, but actually, this is an admin floater, Tom. And Tom, you know, had took the early retirement and was gracious enough to come back, uh, in a part-time capacity to assist the department as we are, uh, in the midst of interviewing, uh, building officials, uh, to take over. But this is a floater that's going to be designated between zoning, building, and conservation. So for example, uh, you know, they're, they need a little help, uh, in conservation with someone, uh, taking a lunch break, uh, needs to answer the phone, uh, s- little help in building if they're overworked and they need some assistance, uh, and then going back to zoning. So those three departments obviously right next to one another. And we just thought this was a better utilization. We had hoped for more admins to actually take the V-RIP. And we didn't get as many admins as we liked or would have wanted to because we thought the floating positions could have worked in several areas of town government, but most especially in permitting. So that's what that, uh, position is going to be doing.
Which may or may not, oop, sorry.
No, that's okay. I was, I was hoping to steal a portion of that time possibly, um, if there was.
There's a possibility, absolutely.
Well, I'm gonna push very strong for the, if I'm here, Brenda, I don't need to overspeak you. But, um, if I'm here, uh, during that time, I, I'm going to push very strongly that we have somebody that can at least devote some hours every week for it.
Absolutely. You know, so there's a lot of things we can be creative with, and there's more efficiencies we can always make, uh, in coordinating together. So I'm looking forward to that position of being utilized in fully, more fully.
Well, to that end, um, since this is a line item under building, the purview, I guess it leads to the question that, you know, we've just seen unfold, who will that person be reporting to?
So for example, we were trying to figure out where we were going to put it. We could have put it under my budget as a floater amongst departments. We could have put it in HR. Um, but we just figured we put it in building and because it's going to be a permitting floater. So, um, yes, it's gonna be the new, uh, building official who will be, uh, they will be answering to.
Okay, and then, uh, the blight, uh, thing was, is that going to be in terms of, I, I mean, I guess not then. Um, will this person be able to support? Or are we looking, is the building department going to be looking at what the blight, um, ordinance looks like in town and, and redefining what that is? Do you anticipate more work in the coming year if, if changes are made to that? Hard to know.
So the, so the blight, you know, obviously, uh, Tom has talked about in the past going before the RTM to get tweaks made to it, which I think, uh, that should happen, probably after the budget season, I would imagine, would be a good time to really, uh, delve deep into that and looking at changes. But I think that this admin can handle the floating. And if there's time, uh, if the admin has additional time during flow periods to assist, then that will be helpful. But I'm, I'm thinking that the new building official is gonna be able to come in and do some rework in that department himself or herself. That will create more, uh, efficiency.
Sorry, I, I was on mute. I have a question on the admin support here. I would presume the building department is carrying the full cost of this position then?
Yes.
Yes.
We, now, just so we're clear, uh, we eliminated the admin position in zoning.
Right.
One of the ad, so this is a floater now between the three.
Right.
Just have, but it is building. Because building is like the lead on everything.
And then how will that, the zoning piece then, if it's taken from zoning that admin position? What, what kind of hold does that create there?
It's not. It's going to be able to flow between the departments.
It's just parked here, Nancy, for funding purposes, I guess, is what they're saying.
Right, when zoning needs the admin, don't be in there. And when conservation needs it, and then with building needs it.
Yep. Can we go then? Um, I don't have any other questions on expenses. Can we, uh, go to? Can we go to revenues on this, which is page eleven? Mr. Conley, back for his swan song.
Sure. If that's page eleven, I'm gonna teach.
Just want to add one thing to the blight, it was five thousand. We added another five thousand to that blight account that Tom has been asking for for years, and that's in an effort to assist people who get called on for blight, who are really just sort of down on their luck, or they're elderly, or they're very low income, and they just simply can't fix, let's say, a broken window, or something that's getting complained about. That additional money in that account will allow us to call handyman service or something to go over there. We had a situation with an elderly woman widow who was, you know, just crying, calling here, just needed something small fit, and has, our neighbor had called on blight, so we're able to fix that for that for that resident. And so that fund, I think, will go will go a long way in assisting residents who simply cannot fix something that's a minor thing. That's causing them to.
Yeah, can I add something to that also? We've had several incidents where people, although the blight ordinance is very effective at some range, there are some people that just do not want to respond, and they would accept the hundred dollars a day fine, but not do anything to make any repairs if repairs are needed. So we ran into that situation on Old Field Road here where we had a vacant home. We were finding him, and I believe we still are, but he had dead animals on the property. So we sent the animal control. The property was so dangerous in regard to vegetation and holes in the ground, that we had to hire a landscaper to get in there and at least cut back the trees. The trees were falling into the sidewalk, the sidewalk was impassable, and you could not get a vehicle into the back here to clean up these, honestly, midsummer dead animals. So it was quite a, quite a mess, so we, we, um, the first select woman gave me permission to hire somebody. Now, that that will be transferred over to the hundred dollar a day fine that we we charge that homeowner, you know, in that vacant property. So I just, you know, that's kind of an example, an extreme example, but one of several we've run across, and we didn't have any money to to utilize in regard to that. So that's done not by, you know, that's done on a commission basis. We all get together and we say, yes, this is a, an extreme need, so, just one example.
Right, and that was a public health issue that the neighbors were actually, their public, their health was being threatened by this situation, so we had to step in so we could protect those people.
Yeah, I mean, people couldn't use their backyards on on Sasko Hill and Old Field Roads, you know, because of the, quite frankly, dead deer and wild foxes that had inhabited a vacant garage and holes all over the place, so very extreme measures. So anyway, that was taken care of, so.
All right, you want to get to the budget? Does anyone have any questions on his budget or on revenue pieces?
I do. Tom, and looking at it, what's, where are you, where are you currently projected to come in this year?
So this this year in in twenty-one, today, today I'm sitting at revenues of just a little over a million and a half. We're still waiting on two fairly good-sized projects from Fairfield U. One, one very big project, and then Sacred Heart is also prepared to come in with their their skating rink. So two large projects that I believe are coming in in March, and I believe that that should fulfill our our revenue. There's a couple other small ones, and we certainly look at from month to month here some of these large residential projects. We just code reviewed one last week, so, one that we were unprepared for. I didn't even, on Castle Avenue. So they're not in the mix.
Yeah, I'm surprised, given how busy you are, and given your commentary about the pools and all that. I'm surprised we're not going to blow through this three point two million dollar number this year.
Well, we're gonna, if, again, I think the fire marshal spoke to this. Quite a bit of our revenue is based on the larger projects from the universities, so, you know, and and they're they're sitting there. I just spoke to Walt Stapleton today about Fairfield U. I yelled at him because we don't have the demo on that convocation center up there. Get me the demo papers. I said, I need a check now. Of course, they laugh at you, but but they're ready to go. They want it down, and they're just waiting on some disconnect letters. It's it's a bit of a process up there to get the high voltage disconnected from that building.
Do we have, um, do you have better line of sight into next year? Do we have some upside here? Typically, you would come in and say, we've got these three, four, five, you know, big projects, and then if we do our normal volume. I mean, what's our line of sight for next year?
Yeah, I wish I had a better fix. The universities are not playing their hands. Normally, we sit down, we talk, and they, you know, they have X amount of dollars. They're, they intend to spend money, but not on these big jobs like they have been doing, so, you know, I I just, I don't have anything, any large projects. They certainly have a lot of small ones they're talking about. They always have, you know.
Is that why you went with the average, is that why you went with the average here? As opposed to raising it or or being a little bit more aggressive because you don't have any big projects in the pipeline?
Absolutely, Tom. Yeah, there's, it's really no, yeah, I have nothing in the pipeline. I mean, I have big projects, residential projects, sitting, ready to go, but there are neighbors who are complaining, there's zoning, there's other issues out there that, you know, might hold those up, but but they're there, they're ready to go. I'm hoping, I just, you know, it's really hard to hang your hat on something like that when when nobody's here with a check in hand. You know, or or at least a, hey, we're gonna do it, and we have the money, and, you know, zoning is okay with it. So those are the big things that kind of hold us up.
Okay, thank you.
I want to be conservative. I want to put the money in, but I want, I do want to be conservative. I don't want to leave hamstring my, whoever sits in this desk later and have them have to explain why he couldn't bring the, or she couldn't bring the money in.
Right, no, I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Conley.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day.
Take care, Tom.
You too.
Yep, yep.
Thanks, Anthony.
Your caliber is who's got Penn Field, Penn Field Pavilion, Parks and Rec, Waterfront, Carl J. Dickman Golf Course, H. Smith Richardson Golf Course. So take it away, Anthony.
Can we start with the revenue side? Yeah, can we start with the revenue side?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everybody. Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks Recreation. Revenue should begin on page seventeen, as long as I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll go right through it. You'll see Penn Field numbers, locker numbers, again, we're using a three-year average. Concession is a contract, so that's a static number. The big, you know, the big guesses here are really what's going to happen with our two pavilions. This budget assumes that those pavilions will be open. You know, to full capacity. As of right now, we're currently closed until March nineteenth. March nineteenth, the governor has opened up wedding venues, commercial venues, to indoor capacities of a hundred and two hundred people outdoors. When we were putting the budget together at this time last year, obviously, we were closed. As we things started to get a little closer to the summer, and we were still in the budget process, the governor had released a four-phase plan to get everything back open. We made it to phase three in October, which was later than anticipated. That was supposed to be in June, and then he reverted us back to what he called Phase Two Point One, which we're currently in, and I don't think his next phase on the nineteenth has a has a number next to it, but it's it's pretty much Phase Three as written. So those are the Penn Field revenues. Happy to take any questions on those if you have. Okay. Parks and Rec.
Anthony, sorry, sorry, my apologies. How many rentals does it assume for Jackie Durrell and for Penn Field?
That's about a hundred and twenty-five each.
Hundred and twenty-five each? How many do you have booked right now?
About half of them.
Is that normal for this time of year? I would imagine it's slow, given people don't know when it's going to be open, right?
It's a little slow, definitely a little behind schedule, but again, we we have pores of the building every day, and we're taking, we take rentals two years in advance. So we are booking things currently, so.
And your rates, and your rates are holding?
Yeah, we're holding the rates again.
And I imagine as as new guidelines are announced for how many people can be in and outside, hopefully. You'll see an uptick.
Praying for it.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the Parks and Rec revenue, you'll see swim lessons. Again, we used a three-year average. We weren't able to have lessons last year, again, due to state guideline to COVID restrictions. They haven't released the guidelines for, officially updated guidelines for this summer, but it looks like they will be allowing swim lessons. Obviously, there's some legislation up at in the capital right now that there, that may really hamstring our attempt to collect revenue for swim lessons. They would like swim lessons to be offered by municipalities for free. Granted, this is only a five thousand dollar number in our budget. Some of the other towns around us obviously have larger swim programs, but something to keep an eye on. Programs, this is our programming account. Right now, we're projecting no revenue for this. Again, this is primarily due to COVID. This money gets collected in at the end of September, September thirtieth, so essentially, we're collecting those now. All our programs, as I'm sure you guys know, camp programs, soccer programs, things of that nature, are pretty much self-sufficient. So we've got to build those back up in order to start turning our revenue on that. So I played it conservative here and with we're showing no revenue. If we do pull in some, great, but I didn't want to guarantee you that we're going to pull in any, again, this past, but the current budget we're in, we were hoping for eighty thousand, and it was a big zero, so.
So, Anthony, in the past, it was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. For whatever reason, we brought it down to eighty last year. Now you're at zero. What are you doing for the cost base for these programs?
So again, these are all self-sufficient, so the cost to run the program typically is what it costs. We make money on our camp program and our sports leagues, our two rec basketball, which did not happen this season due to COVID, so that was, it's a forty thousand dollar hit alone right there. And then our youth soccer, which the numbers are, they're good, but due to the amount of refunds we had to give for COVID, we're, we were, we were in a deficit. We're not in that deficit right now, but it's just a matter of, okay, are we, we're probably going to be back to even, which is all our startup money, and then from there, we'll be able to build upon that again, so.
Yeah, no, I I understand why you're doing what you're doing. I guess what my question is, is on the expense side, I should be saving similar savings then, correct?
No, that's not correct. There's actually no correlation. The pro, the salaries and stuff actually come out of the full-time salaries. These people aren't seasonal employees that typically are doing these things. So again, program fees are strictly set offset by fees. So if we have a soccer program, the fees are coming out of that that fee, just pay the soccer referees. They're not anywhere else in the budget. They come strictly out of those program fees.
No, I understand that, but if you're, you're saying that basically that those fees are accounted for in this account. You have this account at zero. Out of this account, right, you would pay then, I would guess, referees and others and other costs related to the program, right? Which that expense would need to be accounted for somewhere. So why wouldn't that be in your general operating expenses, and why wouldn't your operating expenses be lower?
Because it's in this account. This all comes out of our, our revolving fund.
Oh, so you're saying that this is net, so this truly isn't a revenue account. This is a net account. So you're saying on the programs, you used to make eighty thousand dollars net revenue. This year, you zeroed the whole thing out.
That's correct.
All right.
So, yeah, the way the way that fund works is we have two hundred thousand dollars in that account as startup money, so anything over that two hundred thousand, which would have been that eighty thousand. So in order for you guys, for me to have that eighty thousand, I've got to have two hundred and eighty in that account. That account went into, it went below the two hundred, but we are, I'm hoping to get us back to that two hundred by October, October one, and then, like I said, we'll be able to build that account back up. So we we're still suffering from COVID.
All right. Tennis concession and stuff like that, we're still able to hold these people to these contracts, even though I gotta believe they've been hit by COVID, no?
They have been, and they've all been very good about paying their rent. So, yeah, these are true numbers. Miscellaneous parks, again, we went with a three-year average. Those are just some miscellaneous things, picnic tables, cones, things of that nature that get rented out for block parties and stuff like that. Like you mentioned, tennis concession, that's a contract. And field rentals, we went with the three-year average. Again, springs, it looks like spring sports are going to happen. Fall sports did happen, so our field rentals are doing fairly well. Moving on to waterfront, waterfront, you'll see our beach stickers. I went with the three-year average. Again, this one is is kind of a tricky one for us to predict with COVID. But this does take into consideration the three-year average, and that we're going to be able to sell non-resident beach stickers, which we are currently doing. And we're, you know, as long as we're open and allowed, there's no restrictions on capacity or residents versus non-residents. These numbers will be doable. Our beach parking, we went back to the two seventy-five, which is the number that I normally am able to hit with a fairly good weather year. Obviously, if it rains, that number suffers a little. Very rarely do we go over it. We did have one really good year that bumped that three-year average up. And then the beach concession, that is our Jennings Beach concession. So again, that that is currently under.
So the beach part, why did we bring everything down last year, if you don't remind me of the beach stickers and the beach parking?
Yeah, it was primarily due to COVID. Again, at the time, we had.
At the end, yeah.
Yeah, we had restrictions on when non-residents could come to the beach, when we were selling daily passes. It was resident-only at one point, so we weren't taking any revenue in, so that was.
Right, this was adjusted by the other town bodies after we got done, that's why. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Marina, moving on to the marina. So now this is our second, going into our second budget with the, still call it the new Marina budget. As far as the rates and everything, nothing was increased fee-wise, so we're still expecting to bring in the six hundred thousand for boat dockage. Again, those are our slips. Three-year average is a little high because it used to incorporate all the boat racks that are broken out below now, so that's that extra sixty thousand that's in there roughly. Winter storage is increasing by about eight thousand dollars, and that's because we included, we created a new summer storage for, I think, thirty-something boats, if I'm not mistaken, trailers, so that'll pick up some extra revenue there. And then our kayak racks, sailfish, sunfish, all those types of racks are below, you'll see Penn Field, Jennings, Y-Yacht Yard all stay static because they're all full. And then our gas dock concession, his rent goes up by contract, so you'll see that increase there. Moving on to Carl Dickman Golf Course. Driving range, again, we held steady. They have a small driving range there. Carts, same thing. They very rarely do carts get taken out there, so we kept those numbers. And then you'll see the greens fees. We did go with the three-year average. Again, the in a good year, we would hit these numbers. In a bad year, with rain and no interest in, or lower interest in golf, this number would be much lower. But trying to take into consideration not knowing what COVID is going to do. If people are back at work, that number will go down. If people are still working from home, I anticipate that this number will be higher than this, but the safest bet for me, or most conservative bet, was to go with the three-year average. Smith Richardson Golf Course, primarily the same type of rationale there. You'll see I went with the three-year averages pretty much across the board. With the exception of the locker rentals, that is going to significantly increase because we now have. Um, that is gonna significantly increase because we now have um, eighty-six lockers that we are able to rent out instead of forty. Um, so, and we increased the fee, the golf commission approved a fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the season for the full bag storage there. So um, this is based on sixty percent occupancy. Um, we do anticipate those being very popular. So I would, I would guess that this number's gonna be a little higher. Um, and then you'll see the concession, again, uh, with the Boca in their steel point, um, based on their contract, they came in much higher than our last bench, so we're looking pretty good there.
So Anthony, um, my question here, it relates to, so the clubhouse is open and operational and will be for the summer, correct?
That's correct.
There was talk about raising fee, uh, golf fees as a result of that, isn't that correct?
That is also correct.
But that, but that didn't impact your average here.
That is correct.
Why's that? That means you're not really using the three-year average. You're lowering your number of rounds because your rate's higher.
That's correct. You're absolutely right. We went up two dollars per round, so I've got to assume that there's gonna be some loss in the, the number of rounds. Uh, and for me to try to figure out all the nuances between the number of residents, senior residents, non-residents, juniors, all that, for me, again, it's, it's fairly easy to uh, lean back on the three-year average and, and go with that. Again, we've always carried a one-point-one million dollar historically um, revenue line here, which we rarely hit. I think this year is probably the first year we've hit it since I've been here fifteen years, uh, seventeen years, so.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking is that um, you have this number because it was part of your financial analysis in order to get us to sign off on building the clubhouse.
Yep.
So you should take the number from your financial analysis that justify the clubhouse, and it should be baked in. Here's your golf fee number. Cause that assumed an increase in golf fees because of the new clubhouse and because of what that brought to the table. Now, I can understand tweaking that a little bit this year, given the um, you probably aren't gonna get the private, the big private things that you thought you would get to lease the whole course because of COVID. So you might not get that, but I would much rather see this aligned with the business plan that was presented than saying I just used the three-year average.
I can look at that number just to double check what it was.
Could you please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't, I'm, I'm not letting you guys off the hook for that number, given we just did the uh, the clubhouse there. How's that sound?
No, that's, that sounds fair. Um, I know our numbers were through the roof this year, so again, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned.
That's awesome. Then raise it. Okay.
That takes care of our revenue unless there's any other questions. Alright, we'll jump over to the expense.
Sorry, I just, I'm curious if raising, is there historic precedent to think that raising it two dollars would have a change in people's, what people are willing to do?
Well, that's funny. Um, yes, uh.
Sorry, we need to be funny.
No, no, um, it's, it's, it's just funny in, in the context that, you know, typically when you have a two-dollar increase, you know, I've gotta line out my door with pitchforks and, you know, people are trying to burn the building down. Um, this year, I guess, there's a COVID and the fact that the courses, you know, sold out every day, um, I, I haven't heard that, right? I mean, I don't have people, I don't, I don't, I don't think I've received one email saying, don't raise the, don't raise the rate. Um, and it was, you know, it was, that con- that conversation has come and gone already, so. But again, as to Tom's point, I mean, we've been talking about this for several years now. I mean, this, this project is uh, at least uh, three years in, in, in the work. So, I mean, we've always been talking about that two-dollar increase once the club op- opens, and then a dollar, you know, every year after that, or every other year after that, uh, based on that business plan, so. Uh, but typically, when you do raise the rates, yes, people, you'll get less people playing. Right now, we're, we, you know, we're in that upper third, um, as far as the non-resident rate goes, and that's primarily what we try to base our, you know, gauge where our, our golfers are gonna coming from. You're competing with all the other municipal courses around you. Um, you know, so, but we're, we're, for the most part, you know, fairly even with where, where we should be. So I don't see us losing those golfers, per se.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Alright, uh, jumping over to expenses, um, Penfield begins on page two thirty-nine with the description. Alright, um, one of the things you're gonna see across um, my budgets, all six of my budgets, is an, an increase in seasonal payroll, and this is primarily due to an increase in minimum wage. Uh, minimum wage goes up a dollar this year. Um, I am terrified of what next year's budget will look like because it goes up two dollars in that budget. And again, you guys have heard me talk about this because I've seen this one coming, so um, it's in here, but um, again, that's the driver in our seasonal and park payroll rate, if you'll see. Um, everything else stayed static in this.
Okay, let me take a look. So the pit, what did the rate go up by again?
Uh, a dollar.
Dollar an hour?
A dollar an hour. So if you.
And that's, yeah, and that's the entire increase, pretty much?
Yeah. Yeah, there were no, there's no additional um, bodies put into this.
And obviously, the party attendance are in direct um, concert with how many parties you have, correct?
That is correct.
Right, so it's tied to the revenue.
Yep.
And in terms of COVID uh, precautions and safeties, moving forward, do you feel comfortable that all that is built into these numbers?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, tho- those guidelines are very clear for us, so we're able to uh, to staff accordingly.
And not just from a staffing perspective, but from a cleaning and?
Yes, that's all.
All that, okay, and you feel comfortable, okay?
Alright, um, if there's no other questions about Penfield, I'm gonna move on to Parks and Rec. Uh, so Parks and Rec starts on two forty-two, um, budget numbers are on two forty-four. Um, again, there's no, there's not really any, there's a little seasonal here, um, for our special needs program, our after-school program. Um, outside of that, you'll see an increase in the fees and professional services line.
Yeah, what is that?
That increase is tied directly to our fireworks, um, or, or potential fireworks show. Um, their contract that did go out to bid last year, um, and it did come in, I think, seven thousand higher, um, than it was the prior time we went out to bid, so three or four years prior to that. Um, that also makes up, it also carries, um, I believe, uh, thirteen thousand for uh, concerts, and then it is also our Memorial Day Parade, um, about twenty thousand in there, so.
Any increases to the concerts or the Memorial Day Parade, or is it just all the fireworks?
Just all the fireworks. It, it is all fireworks, I think.
Anthony, how about getting them sponsored?
We've tried.
Doesn't work at all?
It, it has not worked to date, um, it's not gonna stop us from continuing to try. Um, but we've, we've hit some roadblocks with that for sure. Uh, one of the, you know, the, uh, United Illuminating can be one of those that makes perfect sense. Uh, but they don't like to sponsor these types of events.
And it may be an opportunity to work with, just putting, dangling this with uh, Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development to talk about, you know, where there might be some, some opportunities, but agree, United Illuminating, if you're listening, come on. Um, Anthony, can you tell me about the line that says uh, the property, uh, where did I just see this? Educational memberships and then the contract, the property, contracted property services.
Yep, um, contracted property services, that makes up our uh, town hall tree lighting. Um, and the guy who had done, who had lit our tree or decorated that tree for the last thirty years, um, retired. Um, we put it back out to bid, and this is what the lowest bid came in at. So, um, in order for us to get that tree decorated accordingly, at that, the cost of it, um, the educational and memberships line increased.
Did he fall off?
He did.
He, yeah, his internet.
And I would just highlight, it's not a huge number. It's the percentage increase that I was more questioning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I'm back.
You're back.
You know, I guess one of these lines we're gonna have to put in here to, to make this internet a little better over here. Um.
Yeah.
I apologize. Hopefully you guys didn't hear me cursing. Uh. Nancy, I'm sorry about that. Did you, um?
It was, it was not about a specific, I mean, the number itself, contracted property services, it, it's more, and the um, education memberships, they're, they're low numbers, but high percentages, and I was curious about that.
Yep, so the contracted property services is for the town hall uh, tree lighting.
Yeah, I heard that one. It was the next one.
Yep, and then the educational membership is primarily because we had a new uh, staff member, and in order to get them their certifications and everything that uh, goes along with their job, I needed to increase that line item. Um, as you can see, we've been over it almost every year, so it's, it's actually trying to get it in line with where we should be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I'll move, yep, moving right along to waterfront, which is on page.
Sorry, can I ask you what, sorry, I do have one question. In the case, and it may be a little random, is there space in this when you have someone who wants to do a town program, like a camp or a tennis, whatever, and then just economically, it's not viable? Are there programs or supports in place that allow for that?
Yes, um, depending on what, yes and no. Depending on what the program is and what the demand is. If it's a, if it's a one-off program, um, you know, I, I don't wanna pick on any specific program. Um, but if it's a program that just, you know, Nancy Lefkowitz wants, because she thinks it's gonna be fantastic, but nobody wants to register for it, we may try doing it. And if it fails miserably, we won't do it again, um, or we'll try to come up with an alternative way to offer it. Um, if it's a program, like our, our, our adaptive programs, our special needs programs, you know, we, we charge very little for those programs, but we carry them in our budget to offset. Um, because they have, uh, they bring a lot of value to this town, so it, it, it depends. I'm sorry, I didn't really answer that question.
Yeah, well, not really. So like youth soccer, for instance, and, and, you know, this is a work in progress, so I don't need to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
If someone wants to participate but can't afford the fees.
That we have in place, Neil.
Okay.
We, we build that into our program fee, a, a certain number of sco- what we call scholarships, uh, for each one of our parks and rec programs. Not a contracted program, but a program that we run. So our summer camps, we work with the Senior Center and Social Services to offset those costs. We work with all three uh, middle schools. Again, they typically um, have some funds that they can au- help offset those costs too.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, 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 go ahead.
I was just saying, and so it's based on expressed need, and, and second, do you have a, an idea of how many people do participate in those need-based scholarships? And it's not relevant, you know, to passing your budget or supporting your budget, but it'd be something I'd be curious about down the road.
Yeah, no, I, I know the number for summer camp off the top of my head. Um, we typically do about four thousand registrations for summer camp, and we normally have in the neighborhood of about sixty scholarships, um, either free or half uh, scholarships.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Alright, um, moving on to waterfront, um, waterfront again is on two forty-seven, and the uh, numbers are on two forty-eight. Um, so seasonal payroll, again, I'm chalking this up to a increase in minimum wage. Um, we have about eighty-five lifeguards that work for us, um, twenty-something parking attendants. Again, that's where all these uh, people get paid out of here. Um, so you do see an increase there. Um, we also have the skate park attendant included in this right now, which I don't believe was in last year's budget because it was supposed to be leased out, but it is back in the budget, so that's also part of the driving uh, increase here. Um, outside of that, the most part, everything else stayed the same. Um, you will see, I did put um, five hundred dollars extra in for uh, maintenance and repairs. Again, that, this is primarily for uh, lifeguarding equipment, rescue equipment, or any repairs um, that need to be done. And there is a capital outlay line in here that I don't normally put in here unless we need something. And I had put in for a uh, ATV, um, for our lifeguarding staff. Right now, when our lifeguards uh, have an issue, say, at Jennings Beach, uh, the Penfield Guard, they'll leave a skeleton crew at Penfield, the other half of them will jump in their cars, drive through the neighborhood to get over to Jennings Beach to help with the search or whatever type of emergency we have. Um, with an ATV, they'd be able to go right down the beach, and um, it just seems like one of those safety things that we should be investing in, so I threw it in the budget, uh, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I feels like a great thing, but can you go back two pages? Um, the one hundred and fifty thousand, did we talk about that, the master plan?
We did not talk about that.
Could you? Could you? Love, loving a ten thousand dollar ATV, I just don't know what this master plan does.
Yeah, so the master plan, I presented to uh, the Board of Selectmen a few weeks ago through the capital, uh, non-recurring capital project. Um, you guys passed it, if I'm not mistaken, uh, unanimously. It went to the Board of Finance. Um, they voted it down three to five, um, and basically said they didn't support funding a plan into the capital project, so.
Did they wanna bond it?
They didn't, they didn't wanna bond it, so they suggested putting it into the operating budget, so here it is.
Got it, okay. I wanted to, I didn't understand if that's what we had seen, and it's just coming back our way in this vehicle, okay?
Yep, I apologize for glossing over it.
No, no, it's okay, because I was there when we voted for it. I just didn't know we were seeing it again.
Yeah. Any other questions on waterfront?
No, I'm actually good. So Anthony, you're gonna have two vehicles down there. One of them's gonna be DPW that they want for the garbage and stuff like that, which I assume is a replacement vehicle, and then the other one's this new ATV, right?
That's, that's correct. There's, is a replacement vehicle. There's one down, there's a garbage vehicle down there now.
Right. And you're gonna tell us the same thing on the Marina, that it's all related to uh, seasonal payroll, is that right, or?
That is correct. Um, and then there is, there's a capital outlay in there as well. Uh, so the capital outlay in the Marina is for sixty thousand, and this is part of a bigger project that I believe you'll see in some other budget, uh, specifically the IT budget, I think, um, where they're going out for security cameras. Uh, so the thought was to try to jump on that same package and install security cameras, which has been on the, the plan for the Marina for uh, a few years, so just to increase the security down there.
And just so people on the, on uh, watching this or listening to this know, we have had some incidents down at the Marina of boats broken into and things of that sort, have we not?
We have, yes.
How many have we had? Do you know, Anthony?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I'm sure the police can give me a report on it.
Can you just do that, just so that we have that at the ready? I'm sure the other town bodies will ask for it as well.
Absolutely.
And who's gonna monitor those vi- those cameras? How's that gonna work?
Yep, so, yeah, um, pretty much all the new security cameras that get installed have uh, remote access to pretty much any, a desktop anywhere, you know, that has internet access. So our Marina manager, our Marina coordinator will have access to them, as will the Marine Police. Um, so they would be monitored uh, regularly as opposed to going back and trying to figure out what happened.
I would assume they also have record functions too, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, alright, um, next up are the two golf courses, and I'll start with Carl Dickman on page two fifty-four. Numbers are on two fifty-five. Alright, um, so again, you're gonna see um, seasonal payroll increase. Here at Carl Dickman, I actually did put in for an extra position. Um, that is uh, an extra maintenance position. Um, so that's primarily why this jump is. Yes, there, there's minimum wage increases as well, but this one is significantly larger because it has an additional position in it. Uh, so I didn't want that to get lost. Uh, with the increased amount of play we've had during COVID down there, um, we need to keep up with the maintenance. Um, again, we're anticipating this spring and summer that we're gonna have the same type of play that we've had. and summer that we're gonna have the same type of play that we've had, you know, for the past year or so. Uh, at the par three, our plan is to increase pro- junior programming down there, senior programming. Um, so we are really trying to utilize that course to its full capacity. Um the other large driver in this um this budget is the capital outlay. Again, you guys typically will see us put capital outlay, the two golf courses, when we need equipment. Um, so there is a uh Greensmaster mower in here. There's some topsoil and um one other mower that make up that total of the sixty-two thousand.
Do you need to do both mowers this year?
Is Peter is on, I believe Peter is on here. He could just chime in. He knows how to unmute.
I am unmuted.
There you go, I hear you now.
Yes.
Well, well, I, the question was, do we need two mowers down there?
Yes.
Do we need to replace both this year?
Uh I actually, I I way I'm, way things are going, I'm looking at replacing one up here and one down there. Um, we haven't got any new equipment in the last two years. Actually, I actually, I haven't gotten any new equipment up here in four years, but uh if it's, things are things are starting to break down and getting old here, so uh if you have to ask me, yeah, I I think we do need them.
Alright, what's the uh the overtime earnings? Why did it go up so much? The overtime in the season? I'm just looking at a percentage basis. It doesn't look like that's all rate, so is there more volume there? I I'm, my apologies, I stepped away for a second. You might have said it's because of the number of rounds or something.
It is because of the number of rounds down there. Um, that is primarily the driver there. We have one full-time employee that um on the maintenance crew down there and he gets those overtime hours on the weekend, so um that's where they're coming from.
Got it.
Can I, can I jump to a Smith Richardson related?
Yeah, we can, we can jump, we can jump right over there, yes.
Well, um, Mr. Grace brought up something that had been brought to my attention um last week about a mechanic, and I just want to make sure that we're not being, having just invested so much of the town's uh money and resources to this beautiful golf course. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, proverbly shooting ourselves in the foot. I asked a bunch of golfers about this and someone made the analogy of it's like supporting buses but not the gas to make them run, and so that just struck me. And so um while I understand Mr. Grace is graciously trying to make do and and see, I just want to make sure for the record, we're stating that, you know, we're not being penny wise, pound foolish here, especially for an asset that more than pays for itself. That being the golf course.
Anthony, this is part of our reorganization plan and we uh we looked at this closely and I uh consulted with Anthony as well closely and we feel that we can cover this with sending up our our equipment out for maintenance. We have included money in the budget to do that, and it does save a significant amount uh because it's not a full-time staff with all the benefits as well. So we're gonna give this a try. We think we think it's going to work. And, you know, like I said to um a couple of people asked me about it was, you know, you're never gonna know uh if you can change things if you don't at least try. So this is an I, this is an idea that I think will work and we're gonna give it a shot. And if it doesn't, we'll come back, but I I'm pretty sure it's gonna work.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um I'm unmuted, okay. Um, alright, so onto the the Smith expenses outside of the regular payroll. Um, again, seasonal payroll is increasing because of minimum wage. You see those two increases. Um, a big percentage jump that I see is in the uh uh motor vehicle fuel. Again, I I heard you uh guys speak to that earlier. Again, that's a formula where we just type in the amount of um gallons and it it gives finance the number, so um based on our usage, that's the number that would be the increase. Um communications, I increased that line. Um, we have a new golf pro up the golf course. I want to try to support him um in his marketing ventures um as best we can to try to to continue to ride the wave um that we've had up there uh with more people playing. So that's where that increase is. Um cleaning janitorial, again, um with the with the new building, larger building, COVID protocols, we had to increase that line uh just to make sure we have enough supplies. Uh and then we increased our special department supplies by about five thousand dollars uh primarily for the same reasons. Uh, everything.
What's the fees in professional services what keeps going up each year?
Um, so fees in professional services, well, it went, so it actually, this is the line that Brenda was just referencing. This line has our golf pro in it, um which makes up roughly a hundred and sixty thousand of it as opposed to the old lines where it was almost a hundred and hundred and ninety thousand. Um, but then they they added thirty thousand on top of that uh to help offset the cost of not having the mechanic. So if we need to bring a mechanic up, that this is where that those fees are.
Right, so it's essentially outsourcing it in some ways.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Um, and then the capital outlay is the only uh is the is the large, the largest driver of this budget here.
And is that one sprayer?
This is one sprayer, that's correct. The current sprayer, I believe, is upwards of twenty-something years old, so. And we we put this one in in the past too and it's been cut, so it's back.
Right, to Mr. Grace's standpoint, we haven't spent in, I mean, very, very little on capital outline here.
Yep.
He's also gotta like the fact that on here, his position is listed as super golf course.
It's a super golf course.
Yeah, exactly.
Hello, Mr. Flynn, I know your son works on a golf course and uh.
He did, that's true.
Uh, uh, ask, ask, ask him about the mechanics position, it's very important, but I'm not gonna go there right now.
Okay, I will. I actually will.
Any other questions that you guys have? That is uh everything that I've got.
Great. I'm good.
As am I, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Grace, as well.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Grace.
Thank you, Anthony, very much. Um, okay, we're going on next to information technology with David Kelly, who's been the man of the year. Making sure we're all able to continue to meet during this global pandemic and Dave has stretched himself um every which way, so thank you, Dave. You're up.
Alright, hello.
Hello.
Am I on the air? Yes, I am. Okay.
It's page one fifty-six, everybody.
Alright, so uh uh the information technology budget uh covers mostly contracts for centrally shared systems and software. Our three largest items are the town share of munis, the Microsoft software licensing, uh, and the uh townwide fiber optic network that connects all of our twenty-ish sites together. Uh, something that's a little different this year is we have a perfect storm of a whole bunch of multi-year contracts expiring at the same time, and by whole bunch, I mean our town wide area network contract and our uh Microsoft agreements. Usually we uh sign three to five-year agreements on those and we have very predictable pricing for those three to five years. Well, this year, both have come up for renewal and we have a uh uh we we I'm estimating that there will be some kind of an increase in cost after the prices having been held steady for three and five years. Uh, I also have a couple of smaller items that I've added in and that are basically been incremental operational costs. Uh, that is, um, as you may know, right now, we have uh at the beginning of a of a project to install a uh land use permitting and inspection system in town. Uh, we've just sent our first load of data from our legacy systems off to our cloud vendor. Um, and we expect that project to take roughly a year to complete. However, uh, uh, such a system does not account for every kind of form or data that we have in town that we want to digitize and put online. Uh, so uh added into the software line uh an estimate based on a product we've seen to install an online electronic forms system so that a lot of the uh existing paper processes that we have where uh a resident needs to download a scanned form from a website, fill it out, scan it and send it back or mail it back. Instead, we'd like to electronify that whole process. Um, another uh incremental increase is in the communications line in addition to a potential increase in our uh annual cost for that, because again, we're uh renewing that contract. Um, is the addition of some additional security mechanisms on the town's internet line to better protect it from ever evolving security threats. And lastly, I've added a small item into capital outlay uh to take ownership of uh security camera systems that we've talked about, or I've heard talked about earlier. Uh, the town has a number of different brands and flavors and ages of security cameras in uh at various facilities. Many of them are from vendors that are no longer in business. Um, some of them are failing and I'd like to, I don't see that anybody in town actually owns uh most of these security cameras in town, so I'm suggesting that IT take them on. And uh we will treat them like any other network device that the department supports.
Uh, I would encourage us not to be sharing which ones to make sure there's no issue.
That is correct. I'm keeping my, holding my tongue on that.
So let's go from the top though. If we look at IT software, the dri- the driver there of the nineteen percent increase is exactly what?
Uh, that's the online uh electronic form software that I'm proposing is most of that.
And this is and this is kinda like you can electronically sign it as opposed to having it down. This is like DocuSign and that kinda thing, Dave.
Something like that. We've uh looked at a product that's used commonly in municipalities that for that does all of this online. There's no more scanning or any of that stuff.
So give us, give us an example of a of form right now that that would be prevalent. To, you know, s- give me the elevator pitch. What what process do I need to interact with the town where I can just do this online? Is it my park and recreation sticker? Is it my, you know, I I rent the kayak slip? Is it that? What is it?
This is to scrape up everything that's not already in the parks and rec system, that's not already in the permit inspection system. Um, so uh Parks and Recreation, they do a lot of that online in their rec tra- uh in their uh rec track system. Uh, online permits and inspection type stuff will be done in our new permitting, land use and inspection system. But there's lots of little Forbes of various kinds. Uh, you go to any town, any town department's website, you'll see things that are just not, they fall between all the cracks. They're not part of a larger system.
So give me a hard answer, like it dog licenses or something like that. Just give me examples.
Okay, there, okay, uh, there is one there. There you go, dog licenses. That's a good example. There are several things in the town clerk's uh department that uh we could put online, less paper oriented, you know? Uh, and I'm not looking to just, you know, electronify a paper process. The idea here is to go completely electronic where the data is actually received in a backend database rather than receiving an email or receiving a form as a form.
Right, right, that's what I thought. Okay, fees in professional services up three percent to two twenty, um but what is that?
Um, estimating an increase in our uh munis expense. We do munis year to year now. Uh, we used to be able to get down, do munis on a three or five-year agreement, but they no longer do that.
Why is that? Do you know?
Uh well, if you were a vendor, would you want to lock yourself into a th- a set price for three to five years?
Yeah, it's, yeah. In in some ways, yeah.
Wiggle room to to increase. And I, just uh looking at my notes here, I predicted about a four percent year-over-year increase.
Are they um, is there any concern that they're moving away from this or that we need to upgrade their system, et cetera, et cetera? We're pretty well tied to them. Do you have any concerns on that right now?
Not really, um, and we are up to date. I mean, they, we routinely follow their upgrade paths and so on, so it's not like we're falling behind or anything like that. Um, I've heard, I think, this board as well as the Board of Finance in the past discussed, well, would you ever consider moving away from this vendor? And of course, if something terrible happened, we we might do that, but as
Very expensive.
often discuss, there's a high barrier to exit.
Yeah, exactly.
MBA term for that one. So uh, yes, it's uh, it's not the cost of the software year to year, it's the migration cost that that'll get you. So as long as they are, you know, reasonable in their increases and generally, software vendors go up faster than inflation, uh whether we like it or not. Uh, it it takes a bit of, you know, you, they they're trying to keep the business, of course, but uh uh, yeah, i- if I were them, I wouldn't want to lock into, you know, three or five years again either.
Hmm. I mean, what's in communications?
I'm sorry?
Communications went up twenty grand.
Communications.
That you said is the security, right? Is that the uh
Um.
the anti-hacking and the?
Yes, yes. Um, you know, we we have security, some security mechanisms in place now. I don't want to go into deep detail on that in in a public forum. But uh, you know, it's an ever-evolving war out there where you're always uh trying to up the ante and improve your security mechanism.
Yeah, particularly if you're trying to go more online with your forms and things like that, so that just makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to, trying to protect the town a- as best we can and and uh, you know, we're we're doing things very well, I think, but uh we really need to keep upping the ante uh to keep the bad stuff out.
Well, there's been a, a lot of my clients, and this year has been a prodigious year for hacks uh and ransomware and the like. I mean, it's been all over the place.
Yep, uh, yes.
The um I I'd be interested in your capital outlay. Is this part of a multi-year plan?
Capital outlay as as defined here, it's just maintenance. Uh, use capital outlay to continually cycle out PCs, laptops, uh, uh, ne- uh server parts, uh network parts and printers. Uh, that's basically been a flat number right along. PCs prices aren't going up or down all that much. They've kinda stabilized. Same thing with laptops. Printers have gone down slightly, so I've lowered my end, you know, what we're actually spending on printers has gone down. The actual mechanical devices. So I I've slightly reduced that over the past couple of years. And but most of what appears to be an increase in the capital outlay this year is really just restoring my flat maintenance budget as, because we uh, we uh halved it last year.
That's it. I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for keeping us all connected this year.
Most my pleasure. Thank you.
Amen to that, Dave.
Thank you much, Dave.
Alright. We are now on to human services. We're half, we're a little more than halfway through. Uh, we're on to human services with Julie DiMarco. Um, I think she called. Is she, are you on the line?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Here I am.
You have a call, Julie. And what page is this?
Two forty-four.
Two twenty-four, everyone.
Two twenty-four. Yep, so we're a relatively easy budget compared to what you've been addressing today. Um, our largest expenses are people expenses between payroll and um social security. Our fees in professional services is for lunches and for um exercise instructors. The only two areas that we have changed right now really are are social security, the motor vehicle fuel and lube. Advertising, we've bumped down to five hundred because um we just, we just don't really advertise very much with paper or with with sending things out that cost money because we do so much online now. And same with postage, we cut that down. We do do a mailing or two a year or use that for social services to uh mail documents that can't be done electronically, but we don't do as much mailing and we do not mail our newsletter, so that's pretty much it for So that's pretty much it for human and social services. Love to take some questions if you have them.
I'm pretty good actually, so thank you.
Yeah.
Hope you, hope you're well.
Super easy. Yeah, doing great.
Yeah, me too. Thank you for everything you've done to, you know, care for this community and some of our most vulnerable during this crazy, crazy time.
It's been our pleasure.
Absolutely. I just want to piggyback on Nancy's comment. Julie has really stepped up above and beyond, working with her, working with Operation Hope, working with volunteers to, to reach out to our homebound seniors, to people who need help, delivering food, setting up all kinds of programs, caller friendly programs. I do mention a lot of this in my newsletter, but I want to publicly say that, you know, Julie, you have been a real treasure to our community during this pandemic and I just personally want to thank you very much.
Thanks, that means a lot. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for everything, Julie.
All right. Have a lovely afternoon.
All right. You too.
Thanks.
Okay, we're on to you. So the next one is conservation. Obviously, we've had some changes. As we know, we lost the director of conservation and due, due to the reorganization, the assistant position was eliminated. We are currently in the process of, of searching for a new director. The position that was eliminated on, in the budget is going to be pulled into the director position and some of that responsibility will also be handled by the inland wetlands compliance person who was part-time and who is now going to be full-time in the conservation department. In the interim, while we are down staff, I have brought in a group, I don't have my note in front of me, it's SSLR. They are a renowned environmental group and they do this. They handle this, this work for towns that do not have a conservation department. They also assist towns in a whole host of other environmental issues. They are well-known and I can send the information to both of you so that you can have it, but they are going to fill the gap in the interim until we can get fully back staff, fully staffed in the conservation department. And we also have attorney who's been assisting with our conservation issues over, for several, more than several months, maybe six months, who's also going to step up and help. And I've been in contact with the Conservation Commission chairperson and that chairwoman has been in contact with the attorney that is assisting us in conservation issues and is also going to be working closely with this company that's going to assist with all the permits and reviewing all the current things that are on their docket. So there won't be any laps in service or anything like that.
Sorry, what page did you say this was? I'm sorry.
71.
71, Nancy.
Seven, one, okay. I would just, you know, there's not too much to add given everything you've just said. I have gotten a lot of concerned phone calls about conservation in particular. And I, I hope that in the coming weeks, the Conservation Commission can also work with the sustainability group here who's made so many great strides and I know they've had a lot of things to say and just some questions. So I hope that there's a forum for them to be able to ask and to participate in some of the issues that we face. But I hear what you're saying and I look forward to hearing what that group, that outside group has to say and, and thank you for sharing that information.
And please, feel free to direct anyone who has any questions at all to me. I'm happy to discuss it anytime over the phone.
Yep. And, and I do, I just think for some people, you know, as a first line of contact, and I think in part people were waiting to hear, you know, what happens in this process, but we'll also be interested to know about this outside group coming in and, and that's good information and would love to know more, perhaps even before our next meeting, if possible, our voting meeting on Monday.
Oh, next Monday?
Yeah. Is it possible to learn more about them, at least in the information?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to send you information about them after today, you and Tom Bull.
Yep.
And then if you have any follow-up questions, happy to answer them on Monday.
Yep. I don't have any for today though. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nancy.
I'm here.
Do you have anything, Tom?
Yeah, talk about the inland, talk about the wetlands compliance officer, please. And just talk about you, you moved them from part-time to full-time?
Yes, when we lost our director, I had asked her, she's been with us for a while. She's very good. She has all these necessary qualifications and I asked her if she would step up her hours to assist the department with the absence of the director and she did. And then during our reorganization, we, we thought it made sense to move her to a full-time position because she could pick up some of the responsibility of, what, what is it called? What, conservation administrator, coordinator position and, and the director could pick up the rest of it.
Yeah. The, I wanted to comment, just to provide some context on this department. I can understand, Nancy, you had said you received some phone calls with some concern over this. Number one, I think on the wetland side, moving it to a full-time position makes a lot of sense and it has been something that had been spoken about or requested in years past. Number two, as I recall, and maybe Mr. Bremer, if you have the information, I don't know if you have it at hand, but we had done some benchmarking, gosh, for a number of years of our conservation department and the staffing of that department as compared to other conservation departments around the state. And as I recall, and it's been some time, it always came up that the conservation department was a bit overstaffed as compared to the benchmarking that had been done. So the fact that there was a, a position lost here is, is not a, a surprise in that regard. I do think it does make sense to have some information available about that outside firm that you referenced that is coming in to help administer it, just to put some minds at ease. And it would be great to get this, the director position filled here expeditiously if possible, but, but most certainly what's more important than doing it quickly is doing it with the right, the right person. I think we can all agree on that. So not much of a surprise based on what I'd known from prior years here, but I do think Chris Communication Plan to the Public would probably set some minds at ease. That, that's what I would say.
Absolutely. Again, you know, in this public forum, anyone who wants to have, have any questions before I have time to put together a meeting for, on the whole reorganization plan is welcome to call me at any time. But yes, we're, we have a firm that actually is going to help us, assist us with a conservation director position. It is a specialty position. We want the most highly qualified person that we can get. And then that, that group will present candidates to the Conservation Commission and they will choose someone from there and then I have to approve it. But by no means should anyone in the public think that we're diminishing the conservation efforts of the town. We're just being more efficient in our departments and, and as Tom Flynn said, it, that our conservation department was heavily staffed and we, we did do those comparisons with other towns as well. And just based on my work here over the last year and watching, I'm quite sure we can handle everything we need with what we're planning to do there.
The, sorry, with what you just said, I actually want to make it, you know, sort of state for the record that while we may be looking to other towns, certainly Fairfield historically set the standard for what the conservation department is. And in speaking with folks on the Sustainable Task Force and other people invested in, in these issues of conservation, I know that the conservation department supported five different commissions, including conservation, harbor management, inland wetland, land acquisition, shellfish. So I just think that moving forward, I want to make sure in the larger plan, we're not sort of shooting ourselves in the feet, so to speak, because it has been such a standard bearer and the work has been so robust out of that, historically out of that department. So that's just one statement. But second, am I correct? Is there a lawyer working on some of the conservation issues in addition to this outside consultancy?
Yeah, well, we had, so we have town attorneys that assist in all different areas. We have town attorneys that assist HR with labor issues. We have.
But not an.
Appeals and we've had a town attorney before any of the changes who assisted on conservation issues and who has been asked to step up and assist them. And the department has his information, is working with him directly, as is the Conservation Commission. And this is a attorney that has land use experience and conservation experience.
Okay.
All right. Going to move on now to community and economic development. Is Mark Barnhart on the line?
I am.
Hey, Mark, how are you?
Good. How are you? Long day.
Okay. Yeah, it has been. All right, well, you're up. What page?
I believe it starts on page 90.
The numbers are on 91.
Right. Sorry. So there are really three, three changes of, of note to speak to. Obviously, the biggest one is the fact that we're requesting $60,000 in the capital line to upgrade the town's website, the official town website. So that is not exclusive to this department, obviously, but it is something that should be done periodically. It's been, I believe, seven years since our last upgrade. So again, requesting funds for that purpose. The other two changes, while it doesn't have a monetary or financial impact, we are looking to upgrade the skills of our administrative support position. We do have a vacancy at the present time. The incumbent position has been out for an extended period of time on medical leave and recently was separated from her employment because she's not able to return. But with that, there's an opportunity to upgrade that position to more of a marketing coordinator, which will allow us then, as you see in the fees and professional services line, to reduce our reliance on some of our outside vendors, to manage some of our social media accounts and also produce our economic development newsletter, which has been on hiatus, given the absence of, of some folks here. So with, outside of the, the capital request, it's really a slight reduction year over year in terms of our operating budget request from, from the current year, about less than, about $12,000 or 4%. So I'm happy to take any questions that the members may have at this time.
Nancy, do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead as I'm getting my bearings, so go ahead. I'll.
Sure. So if you guys identified a firm that you want to use on the, on the website redesign?
We have not, to the best of my knowledge. I, I hope not to, to be leading that effort.
Who would? That's, that was actually Mark going to be my next question is, who is going to lead the effort?
You know, I, I think it would probably be a team, but I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that it hasn't yet been identified. Perhaps out of the first black woman will have some input into that or further direction. But, you know, we'll be happy to take part. I just wasn't necessarily volunteering to lead the effort.
Yep. Brenda, do you, do you have an idea who's going to lead the effort?
My chief of staff, Jackie.
Got it. How did you guys come up with the amount of 60 grand?
Well, we wanted, we wanted to attract talent and we're redesigning this position to have a little bit more marketing experience to assist Mark because we want to be boosting and working on economic development in a more strategic way, so.
You're talking about the website? I think she, I think Tom was talking about the website, which I believe was based on what it costs some neighboring towns to do this, do this work, as I recall. Is that correct?
Right.
Right. So is, so is the goal here to build the website? Chief of Staff will, will be largely responsible for the day-to-day with this, working with Mark and the first select one that I would think, because part of this is economic development. And then this website would be maintained by the marketing coordinator on a go-forward basis? Is that the goal here?
I think we'd have to suck that out a bit more. But it would either be Jackie or it would be the marketing person. It would be, it would be somebody within the two departments or two offices.
Yeah, currently, you know, we do have a couple websites that we do maintain, so it wouldn't be a reach for the marketing coordinator to help oversee the town's website as well. Currently, we rely upon Mary Mao in the library to be our webmaster. So that, it would be a change in that regard.
Is this, is this, when we talk about website redesign, I just want to make sure I understand the overall concept. As far, there's the town website, right? And, and I get that it's a bit clunky and sometimes, you know, it's got the minutes manager and the agendas and all that garbage on there. I get it. And then Park and Rec has its own website and the library has its own website and, you know, Police and Fire, I'm not sure, but I'm sure they have a presence. Is, is the goal here to bring this more cohesive and is this, as opposed to just a redesign? Is this also a web strategy?
Yeah.
That became really obvious when we came in, that everybody has their own websites and we're not, we're not integrated with one another. And so that is the long-range plan is for us to all be integrated together. So you're not going to one site for police, one site for Mark, one site for this. And, and our, our website, you know, you say it, it's very clunky. It's, it's not helpful. It, it makes it really difficult for the public to find anything. It's not easy to use. It's not user-friendly website. And so that is the plan is to make it more interactive and easy to use and then integrate all the other town departments so that we're all, you know, it's like one-stop shopping.
Yeah, I would, in order to do that, I definitely would encourage, first things first, it's got to be a cohesive strategy before you start just redesigning and launching a new website. And I know that's kind of the sexy part of it.
And I think the other, other thing to bear in mind is you have to always, you always have to think about who you're talking to. Who is your audience? And what do you, what message you're trying to get across? So it may be necessary, for example, to keep some external websites if they're distinctly different audience than the existing resident base, which is what the Fairfield website should be focused on, but.
Well, Mark, I, I agree.
It doesn't make sense because it's just adding clutter.
Yeah, so, so Reader's Digest version, I worked, I was a CFO for a company called About.com and that's exactly what we did. We had a homepage that you could enter through the town of Fairfield and that's your homepage. And then you had different storefronts, which were very specific to Park and Rec. But the key to it and the efficiencies behind it was all the backend technology and hosting and all the tools were all, were all the same. Right, well, they were all the same. So that it was easier to maintain, it was cheaper to maintain, it was very efficient. The look and feel was very similar, at least in the, in the skeletal bones, even though each area, to your point, would see a different audience and, and might, you know, look a little bit, the look and feel might be a little bit different. But I just want to, that's a big undertaking and I would just say that that's, that's probably the most important part is to get that part set right. And if you do that, the design and, and all that just kind of falls into place. Not only is it better customer service, but it's, it's much more efficient to maintain for the organization as a whole. So I, I would really encourage this to be about the web presence strategy before it's just the redesign. That's, that's kind of my soapbox, you know, discussion here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is there any further questions?
I'm supportive of that and I would like to make sure that that's integrated with the work that Dave Kelly's doing on both security as well as the forums. I think that's, I think we have a real opportunity here, Brenda, to drive the efficiencies and the customer service that you're talking about if, if this is done very deliberately and very thoughtfully.
Yes, we've been working with Dave on this and this has been an overall. Yes, we've been working with, uh, Dave on this and this has been an overall strategy we've been working on since I came in. So everybody's been talking and, and, and strategizing, collaborating on this for quite some time. So we're looking forward to seeing it happen.
And I would just echo, if we have a beautiful, robust, user-friendly website and maybe a mural or two in town, Mark? You, you and I can high five and call it a, call it a day.
You bet.
All right. Let's, uh, move on to
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Let's move on to Fair TV and I believe the commissioner, uh, chair, Stu, Stu is on.
What page?
Are you on? Page fifty-two. Stu, are you on the line? Okay, you want to, you want to talk a little, Jerry?
What page, what page?
Fifty, fifty-two.
Stu's on. No, you can continue on, Jerry has this much better than I do. Uh, I had trouble getting in, I, my line kept being muted, but, uh, uh, well, basically
Can I jump in with a question? Um, the fees and professional services, I hear you, Jerry, in terms of the, the increase and, and bringing things up to a more competitive, what accounts for the other items under that? It's a single lied item, but am I?
More, more meetings, more, uh, Right, more meetings, more personnel.
Um, and certainly I appreciate that as we've all tried to stay connected and thank you for all of that. I just wanted to, uh, have it stated for the record.
Understood. Right. And basically that's, and basically that's the amount of, basically it's the amount of bandwidth that is needed. HD is needs more than SD and the cable companies refuse to give us more bandwidth, which is why we do everything in HD, but we have to broadcast in SD. Thank you. Capabilities, yeah.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank you, uh, for all the work and effort. Obviously during the pandemic, uh, the value of Fair TV has, has stood out. Um, I think that going forward, it's, it's, it's become an integral part of our government and part of transparency. Uh, the biggest concern I, we've always had with Fair TV, at least, um, that I've seen in the past, has actually been sound quality. And I, you know, I don't know what you guys are doing to, to deal with the sound quality. Um, but, you know, I, I would encourage you to explore what those opportunities are. And quite frankly, it's become so important, come back to us and let us know that.
We have
Okay.
We have, we've investigated this many times and we're hamstrung in that a lot of the people have no idea how to use the microphones that are put in front of them and the, uh, the sound quality is bad because, again, we're on a SD feed, so the sound quality is not as good as an HD feed and we're, we're helpless to the cable company. But the biggest problem is that most of the people that, that are using the system have no idea how to use the system.
Go ahead, Jerry, I think you wanted to say something. Yeah. Good. Thank you, hey, I don't need to go through this anymore with the budget, but thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that. I look forward to getting back live and seeing it for myself. Thank, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, well, thank you, uh, thank you both for, for, uh, being on. And, um, gonna move on now to, uh, the next item. I just want to be, uh, cognizant, we are at four-ten and we had said we were going to stop at five, so if we could be much more laser-focused on the budget and, uh, just related items, that would be much, that would be very helpful. Um,
All right, thank you.
So we're next up.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Stu, I appreciate you calling. Uh, next is Dave, uh, Kay with, uh, Tax Collector, so Dave, you're up.
Page number?
Page number, guys?
One-fifty.
One-fifty.
Go ahead. Hello?
Dave.
Dave, you're on mute? You see the mute button there? You have to click it?
Thank you for playing our game.
Um, Dave Kelly, are you on there? Do you think something's wrong with his?
Maybe Fair TV shut him off, how's that?
Dave Kelly? Do you have him on mute?
Uh, I'm sorry, I was talking and I'm on mute. Uh, Dave Kay, can you hear me okay? Yeah, if you click the meeting info button at the very top of the web ex-screen, it'll pop down the dial-in number and attendee ID and you could switch to telephone for audio, because your microphone does not appear to be working.
Possible to go on to the next item and then?
Come back.
Come back?
Yes, yes, thinking not. Okay, well, Dave tried to get on, um, we're gonna go to, uh, Helene, are you on? I see you there. Helene?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Helene, you're up.
I'm up. Okay, we're on page, um, two-thirty-two.
Two-thirty-two.
All right, for the library, the main increases you're going to see, because if you recall last year, we, for COVID, we cut back on material, we cut back on materials and part-time. So we're trying, hopefully we're planning for a post or soon-to-be post-COVID world, so both those lines are where we're increasing. And part-time is driven by the, um, increases to minimum wage and materials, we're going to try to work our way back so that we can cut down wait times on materials.
Are you comfortable that in this, uh, the excitement of, and hello, and thank you for everything you do and the services you provide and all of that? Um, are you comfortable that this new budget will allow for a post-COVID world where people can, when allowed, appropriately use the library in the ways that they do as a refuge and a sanctuary and all the other reasons that they use this beautiful resource?
I, I know what you're saying. I, we're trying to be smart about this because things are not going to automatically go back to normal, so it's going to be a phased-in approach. The hours, part-time line directly affects the hours, which we know. So as we move slowly, we can increase more hours. So this is based upon being open less hours in the evening and weekends. We will be open and we are open now, evenings and weekends. So it will be less hours, but I think in the library world, it's going to be working back slowly anyway. And we're still, we're going to work on this balance because if the one thing this has taught us and we are getting better and better at is virtual services and programming. We're making great strides and the, the exciting thing is we're going to figure out how to balance these both, both demands now.
Which is great, because I think, um, the balance is the key here to not, yeah, okay. Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Hey, how are you?
Good, Tom, how are you?
Good, thank you. Hey, fees and professional services, uh, that's gone up eighteen percent. Can you speak to that one? Which is that one?
Um, Brenda, do you want to speak about that?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in there, Tom, thank Helene. Um,
Thank you.
So, Tom, part of our reorganization
Yep, yep.
The janitors, I think you and I spoke about this.
We did.
We, uh, we had, we had a janitor, uh, retire from the janitor pool for both libraries. And, you know, obviously, this is what I talked about during B-RIP, that it was better if people retired, because you don't want to eliminate positions when people are in them, if you can help it, because it's not a pleasant thing to do. Um, so this, uh, position went open and we looked at this very closely. I spent a lot of time with Helene talking about it and we feel that we can handle this, uh, the, the pick-up, the extra time needed with a part-time position at the discretion of Helene, when she needs that time, uh, at the library. So that's where that extra
So it's not a part-time staff, it's a service?
Well, it, it, well, it, it's a service to, to the extent that it's surrounding what Helene needs.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is you have it here in fees and professional services, which means this isn't somebody that's going to be paid via payroll or whatever. It's a custodial service that you'll bring in on an as-needed basis, if I understand this correctly.
Yeah, that's, we went back and forth with that, um, you know, we, we weren't sure if it should be professional services or, or a part-time person that she can rely on and we're still kind of playing with that.
Okay.
I'm going to say how it works for her. You know, Helene needs specific time, uh,
Right.
to plug in, she needs it, and I didn't want to hamstrap, strap her, because I wanted to give her that flexibility.
Got it, so for budgetary purposes, you put it in fees and professional services for about thirty grand, but it could end up being in part-time payroll?
It might, depending on what she needs.
Yeah, no, I understand that. What's the, I, what jumped out at me here was the pay differential has just continued to skyrocket here. What's, what's driving that, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, the pay differential, again, this is planning for, um, Sundays again, if we can open Sundays.
Ah, so this is the actual, this is the time and a half or double time?
Right, yeah, the double time, I, I mean, it's also the evening hours, but that's the bigger driver is the Sunday.
When is this contract up?
I'm not really sure, the, the, Brenda, do you know when that contract is up?
Hold on, when?
The Thea contract, do you know when it's up?
June thirtieth.
Uh, I don't have, twenty-one? Yeah, because they're, they're open now, Thea, um, DPW, I think so.
Everything but police is open.
Everything but police.
Yeah, here's Well, here's, A, I mean, this is, this is one of the things that, where we can be better at what we do. Um, we should make people's time Sunday. We should stagger people's work weeks so that you're not paying double time on, on weekends. There should be a staff that works Monday through Friday and a staff that works Wednesday through Sunday, something like that, so that we're not paying significant pay differentials here, but rather it's when someone is hired or assigned, that's their specific, specific work hours. Um, because we continue to do this and, and I would encourage that in the next contract, that we can we consider staggering those work weeks and that work time in order to cover. You know that what you want is a seven-day-a-week library, so I don't see why we shouldn't, um, contractually support that.
That's part of the negotiation with the unions that will be taking place.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about that previously, and it just continues to stick out there, um, when we do stuff like that. And certainly, it is appropriate to have the libraries open on weekends, but we know that it shouldn't be considered extra time. It should be considered part of the job, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's not any additional questions, I'd like to move back to Dave Kay. Are you on, Dave?
Oh, we've got library, we've got Fairfield Woods, if we do Fairfield Woods.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's the.
Is it the exact same?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's with the, uh, library materials and the pay differential, yeah, and the part-time. So, you would keep both libraries, you're trying to go back to both libraries open?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Okay.
And do you have the same custodial issue here, or is that covered?
That, that's covered, because the person is, I have a person there.
Got it. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Helene.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helene.
Thank you, Brenda. Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, Dave, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Dave.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. All right, sorry about that. All right, so, good afternoon, everyone. Um, just wanted to say that it's not often that as Tax Collector, I actually have good news to give, but.
Sorry, remind us of the page.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, one fifty, starts at one fifty. So, um, with my budget, the, uh, tip, there, there is, it's basically a flat budget this year from last year. Uh, the, the driving, the driver that would generally cause an increase would be salary. Uh, everyone in my, um, office is part of the union, but they have all achieved their contractual step increases. So, from last year to this year, there is no step increases that normally would, uh, you know, drive the, the, the increase in my budget. Um, just going down the list here, it's page one fifty-two. Any, any questions on any of the line items?
I don't actually have questions here. I do wanna talk to you about revenue a little bit, when you get a chance.
I don't have any questions, so go for it.
Um, Dave, in the, in the budget book on page three, I don't know if you have it.
Um, yeah.
So, if you could take a look there. I wanna point out two, um, two numbers and see if you have any thoughts, questions, or concerns on them.
Sure.
Do you, are you able, do you have the book?
Yeah.
All right, prior-year taxes, um, we have an estimate in there of three-point-two million dollars to be collected. Uh, do you think that's achievable? Do you have any concern on that?
On, no, I do not. Uh, so, we, we average around three-point-three, so, I, I, you know, I don't think that's, I think that's very achievable. It should not be an issue.
Thank you. And then we have the estimated collection rate. Uh, last year, we had a collection rate of ninety-eight-point-six-one. Uh, they're budgeting a little bit lower of a collection rate this year at ninety-eight-point-five-six. Uh, do you have any issue with that collection rate, and do you have any updated information? I know it's a little bit funky this year, because the state has given that.
Yep.
Kind of grace period. But do you have any issue with that collection rate, or, uh, you know, where do we stand this year?
Nope, I do not, because again, uh, so with, with the ninety-eight and a half, historically, that's around what we average on a typical year. Um, last year, we were ninety-seven-nine, but that was obviously not a typical year. We had a deferment in April that caused a lot of payments to be made after the end of the fiscal year.
July, right.
I can never say never, but I've been given indication from the state that, yes, the current taxes that were due January first are in a deferment right now. They do not anticipate deferring April first taxes, which means that we'll have plenty of time to collect these current January taxes that are deferred. If the April first taxes are not deferred, which I've, again, I've been given an indication that they won't be, then we'll have plenty of time to collect the April first taxes before the end of the fiscal year as well.
Great.
Then we typically get that ninety-eight and a half rate as a result.
I am, I am fine then, sir, and I appreciate your time. Thank you for dialing in.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Dave. We're going to go to, uh, Human Resources. Is, uh, Jim, I thought Jim said he might come up here. Um, wanna text him, Jared?
In the meantime, what page?
Eighty-seven, but I don't see him on, and.
Hey, Brenda, in the, in the, in the interest of time, uh, to make sure that we have enough time today, um, I would recommend that we push some of the items that relate to Jared, since he's gonna be here tomorrow anyway, such as retiree benefits, um, debt service, um, to discuss that tomorrow, as opposed to this evening.
Well, I think we still have time, so I wanna do some of the, um.
Well, we've got a lot more to go through, yes. I just don't wanna rush those two discussions, quite frankly, and think that since Jared's gonna be here tomorrow.
I agree, but we do have, um, uh.
Half hour.
We have other items besides the education budget. We have a bunch of items that also have to be discussed tomorrow.
Sure.
So, I wanna make, um, okay. So, while we're waiting for Mr. Hazelcam to either arrive or, uh, come on the web act, uh, Jared, do you wanna jump on finance on your budget?
Sure.
Here, do you wanna come up here?
All right. So, on the spending side of our budget, of the finance department's budget, not a lot of change. Um, we have one, though, that's pretty significant, and I think was requested last year, was the addition of a, as part of the reorganization, the addition of a grant coordinator, um, to try to, in an attempt to maximize the, uh, revenue sources outside of the town and our taxpayers. So, um, that, what, what we did was put in thirty thousand dollars for that, for a part-time, uh, grant coordinator.
You would.
Outside of that.
You have my support for the grant coordinator. This is something that's been discussed for years, and I wanna ensure that we're not leaving money on the table as relates to grants, uh, both grant tracking as well as grant applications. So, I'm, I'm a believer in this position.
And that's really the only change in our, um, budget.
The, the, the one thing, again, um, something I've been referencing throughout today's hearings, um, and hello, thank you for your time and all your work on this, um, something I've, I've referenced is diversity and inclusion, and I don't know if, if any of this is represented here or could be pulled from other, um, line items, or it's perhaps something to look at down the road. But I know many municipalities have a diversity and inclusion team within their human resources, uh, umbrella, and I'm just wondering if perhaps that's something we could discuss, if the town has an appetite for it, uh, or.
Sorry, we, we, I just wanna interrupt for one second, uh, because we are waiting on our HR department to come up here.
Oh, okay, sorry. I couldn't see who I'm.
Let's finance now.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I was thinking, moving right along. Sorry, sorry, yep.
Okay.
I was so, my nose was in the book. No, no, you're, you're right. And my nose was so in the book that I just didn't look up, so. Sorry about that. I don't have questions for you.
No problem.
I think, um, one more discussion that I'd like to have, but it could take a little bit of time, and I don't wanna do that if we have others waiting right now, is on investment income. I'd like to talk about that a little bit, because there was some significant change year over year on that. But, um.
Sure.
We can come back to that, Jared. Like I said, you're gonna be in the room, so I would rather get to somebody that doesn't need to come back.
So, I, we have a little bit of time. I can, uh, we can at least start that conversation, and then, uh, you know, if it, if their response isn't sufficient, then we can, uh, continue tomorrow, so.
Go for it.
Yep, so we, we are including a reduction because we're seeing the same this year. Um, and it's, let me just get to the right page here. And so, the problem for us now is that we're, we are not able to get the rates that we've had in the past on any of our investments, our operating fund investments. We're very limited in what we can investment, invest in, uh, by state statute. And so, the returns that we can get, you know, to give you an example, the, uh, Connecticut Fed, where we were, was kind of a, a short-term investment fund, was a, my understanding, a default in somewhere where we used to keep money in the past and, uh, and still do, um, but their rate right now is point zero-seven percent. Um, and so, and that's what we're seeing, that, that kinda trend across the board when it comes to, uh, operating, operating fund investments, because we are limited to, uh, government funds and, uh, money market funds, uh.
Right.
The returns are.
Is there a, hey, Jared, is there a calculation sheet behind this that you can just flip to me, so I can take a look at that, to just see how it was calculated? That might be the most efficient way.
Okay.
If you can, if you can flip me that, and then talk to me about the change in market valuation.
Market valuation is projected to decrease by two-hundred-seventy-six thousand nine-hundred-seventy-six. We had our, uh, one of our investment, uh, companies that we work with take a look at this and do the analysis, and this is what they came back with. Um.
If you could just flip me that, too, I'll take a look at that, yeah.
Sure.
I'll just take a look at the analysis, that's all. But, uh, 'cause I, I noticed it went from a positive this year, positive three-year, you know, average for three years, up a quarter million. This year, it was supposed to go up three-sixteen. Now, I don't know where it is, uh, obviously. And then, we have it going down to negative two-seventy-seven, so it's a hell of a swing, and I just wanna understand it, that's all.
Yep, we can get that for you.
Now that I'm back with the program and on the right page and in the right department, um, can I just ask a quick question? Because I remember last year, the discussion of the grant coordinator, there was some talk about, um, where the oversight would be in terms of what departments would, would have access to this. Um, and I'm sorry if I missed it while my head was down in human resources. Um, how do you see that sort of spreading out through departments, or do you not, or can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, the, the person will be under the finance department, but we're not limited to, uh, grants within the finance realm. They could be, um, they could be looking in, uh, grants related to other departments, whether it be, you know, we, we do get, uh, a good amount in terms of capital grants anyway, from our engineer, in our engineering DPW area. Um, and, uh, so that, that's, that's one potential, um, benefit to having that person, is to look for some of these things that may, maybe they're not ongoing grants that we get, but they could be something where the, maybe the federal government's starting a new program and, um, you know, we wanna fully take advantage of that, so that would be a good use of that person to, uh, try to maximize the funding that we get for them, for whether it's a bridge or.
I can, hey, Jared, I can add some color to this, too, because this came up probably six or seven years ago, something like that. And it really came out from a discussion that was like, where are all the grants we applied for, and what status are those grants? And it was kind of, it was all over the lot. Each of the department heads was kinda doing their own thing as they had time. So, to Jared's point, if they didn't have time, because they were running their department on a day-to-day basis, maybe they missed a deadline, maybe they missed an application, maybe they just didn't know that a grant was available. In addition, after grants got applied for, there was some question of, were we following up on those grants? Did we know where they were for the project? There was no one person that was assigned to actually be the gatekeeper and the monitor to make sure that in general we were going after all the funding sources that were available, and when follow-up questions came and the like, we were, we were completing those follow-up questions. So, it was really a catch-all, and to Jared's point, at the time, putting it in the finance department to make sure that they were kind of the, the, the cop, uh, o- over this, um, made the most sense. And that, that again, that was a number of years ago.
And understanding all that, in some ways, you've just made the case for the thing I'm about to say, which is, I see it's here as part-time. Is that, are we, again, getting in our own way, um, and not having this as a full-time position, as we're reimagining what the future looks like at Town Hall?
You know, I was, I was wondering the same thing myself when I first saw it, and I'll just give you my perspective. This is gonna be a position that's gonna be easy to understand whether it pays for itself pretty darn quickly, pretty darn quickly, maybe within a year. So, I think, you know, I, my recommendation would be that you start it part-time, and then you evaluate what's going on with our grants, what's going on with our tracking, how are we pacing, and then maybe you do make it full-time, um, after you've got kind of a track record of what the position provides. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, Tom, we're gonna be looking at that. Obviously, we wanna, you know, assess it and watch it in action and see how it goes, but obviously, we can make changes on the ground, and then always go to the Board of Finance and ask for a transfer. But there was so much pushback about it last year, you know, I don't wanna jump in with another full-time position. I wanna see how it works, and if I can show the value, and if I can show that this person is bringing in money to more than pays for their salary, I think I have a better argument going in after that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other, any other questions on either the spending or the, uh, revenue finance?
Not, not for me, thank you.
We do have HR here now.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks for the answers.
Thank you, Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Where, uh, what page is HR, if you don't mind?
Eighty-seven.
Thank you.
Eighty-seven.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Um, I'll just, uh, Pat Egan is also here, so he's gonna cover, um, the liability coverages and the risk management side of the budget. I'll cover the office budget, which basically is, you know, a substantial rollover from last year. Um, most of the changes, I think I actually missed this meeting last year. I was hired shortly after the meeting.
What you.
Yeah, what you mean. Uh, so, the biggest change really is in the technology area. If you look at the, the budget related to that, um, a couple months ago, we finally got up and running live our online application system. Until then, we had paper applications. So, we were able to get that, um, up and running, and we're still in the process of sort of refining that, but right now, all of our applications are online, uh, and, and the process to send those out to the department is electronic now. Um, the other pieces of the, um, sort of the software, uh, is I'm about to purchase, uh, skills assessment software, which on the sheet here is called Test Genius. It allows us to, um, basically run assessment tests for a whole spectrum of different kinds of jobs. Um, I've used it in two other towns, very good. Uh, it also allows us to use it for some training purposes. And then the last piece, which has been, I guess, in the town budget for a while, is the time and attendance system, which as of right now, is not.
which as of right now, has not commenced, because we just haven't had time to do that. The expectation is, hopefully, the RFP will go out over the next couple of months, and we'll select a vendor, and then start to move forward on the time collection, um, piece. That's a, uh, large project that put two of them in, in two different towns. It's a big burden mostly on the payroll function. Uh, there's a lot of integration that occurs in those projects, um, but I certainly think that there needs to be some kind of system to collect time in the town. That's certainly a weakness we have. Yeah, the rest of the budget items are sort of, not a lot of consequence, so I can answer questions sort of about the general budget. Now, if there's questions about, uh, the liability budget, I'll have Pat come up. I don't want to answer any, uh, of those questions. I think we have any.
I had made the comment erroneously to the finance department of a human resources question, which was just about, um, diversity and inclusion and, uh, the opportunities for having somebody on staff who really looks at holistically at issues of inclusion across all, uh, departments, and, um, whether there's allowance for that in trainings or, or whatnot. So I just wanted to bring that up as either a conversation for another time, something that we can begin to discuss, uh, if there was even space in some of these fees and professional services. So, just curious about that. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I think there's an ongoing question that I would expect is going to come up over the next year. You know, right now, I'm actually adding, I'm, I'm down staff, so I haven't filled those positions yet, so I'm in the middle of doing that. Um, and then I know you folks are involved in task force, because I think I, I spent a, a fair amount of time talking to one of your members. I don't remember right now what her name was. Um, and you know, I think the ongoing discussion, uh, there can be assessments about whether that's things that we can do in-house, whether there's different efforts that we can make. Uh, it's a little challenging. I don't directly oversee the police and fire hiring, so that's something that we have to address separately. But, um, certainly it's something that can be discussed. I know that you folks are going to put out any recommendations that we can take a look at. Um, you know, there's, there's certainly outreach now to a certain degree. Um, you know, one of the reasons that I'm actually hiring a recruitment firm for two of the physicians is to help in that exercise. We don't really have the resources to do that, um, and that's part of the role that they would have in that exercise.
Um, excellent, thank you.
Yep. Anything else, or all set?
No, I'm, I'm-
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I've got something else, sorry, I was on mute. IT software is going up three, over three hundred percent. Give me the rundown on that. I, you mentioned several different systems. Can you tell me what they are?
Sure, it's the three I just outlined, which is online application, tracking, uh-
How much is that? Yeah, how much?
Uh, it's on there. The, the, the license is twelve thousand five hundred.
Is that a one-time license, or is that an annual?
That's annual.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, the testing software I just outlined for skills is thirty-six hundred and fifty dollars a year. And then there's the, it's an estimate, it's an estimate of what the time and attendance licensing will be. That is a pure estimate, and so we can put out the RFP, uh, and, uh, get bids back, so.
And that's, uh, is that Kronos?
It'll be, there's a series of different companies. Kronos would be-
Got it.
The most expensive one of them, but it would be something like a Kronos that was your time collection, yeah.
So, and wh- where's the payback on this? Like, is it in? Gi- give me, where am I going to see the reduction in the budget for the, for all this money we're spending? And I know you don't have it in there for this year, but where is, where am we going to see it in future years?
I guess I don't really understand. The question right now is, we don't track it, uh, in any substantial way. We don't have a system that captures time at all. So, um, you know, the capture is going to be making sure people are here on time, or right now, they wouldn't be. Uh, that's not something I can quantify at this point.
Well, the capture should be, you don't put in a software s- system without saying what the payback would be. Obviously, you believe that if you're putting in the system to track time, you, you, the, the thought is that you're going to have more accurate, more timely reporting regarding their hours, and you're going to pay people better, is that correct?
Yep.
So the thought is that you, because right now, is everything done manually, including like vacation tracking and that type of thing?
It's done manually, or it's either done manually for vacation tracking, or time collection, it's virtually nonexistent.
So, which depart, which departments would be doing time collection?
Now, we're under the system. Right now, the only department that substantially punches clocks is DPW has time clocks that they use. Uh, the rest of the departments, we run an exception payroll, so the system defaults to paying them their full pay, and there's not a process beyond that that captures anybody's time.
Okay, in the future, who's going to do time reporting?
Who, you mean groups? Which groups?
Which departments? Like, where are you going to roll this out? You, go ahead.
It's, it's my expectation that all the departments will. I believe police and fire already have systems. Um, so it would be the rest of the town, except for police and fire.
So police and fire do do this, so it's not just DPW. Police and fire do time reporting as well, right?
I'm not familiar with their systems. I don't know whether they actually capture time, or whether they're primarily scheduling software. I think it's primarily scheduling software.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the business case here. That, that's kind of what I'm looking for. We're saying we're going to do it, and that's great. I'm just looking for the business cases. So what do we get? Do we expect that we're going to replace, uh, police and fires' timekeeping system with, with the new one? Is that the goal?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No, I, I can't speak that out, because I'm not familiar with their systems at all. So I can't speak to the police and fire system. I can just speak to the fact that under wage and hour law, we're supposed to be cap, we're supposed to be capturing people's time, and we don't do that right now.
Okay, so you're saying this is a regulatory issue?
Yes.
Okay, but DP-
But it has productivity.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. What do you expect, uh, what do you expect to get in productivity over this? Do you know?
People showing up to work on time.
No, that's a, that's a wise answer. I'm talking about what percentage. Do we think it's five percent? Do we think it's ten percent? What do we think it is?
So Tom, this is about accountability, and this is all part of my vision when I came in. I want everybody working the amount of hours they are supposed to be working, and I don't want people being paid for hours they did not work.
Right, I agree.
For anybody to track anything, and so, when Jim came on, he explained that towns all have these. Our town does not. So, it makes sense to have it. DPW has a punch-in system where they all stand in line, which is ridiculous. Uh, the library passes around a piece of paper where people are writing in their hours, which is inefficient as hell, and it just doesn't make any sense. So this is not, this is not to, uh, to, uh, make money, because we're not a business, we're a municipality. This is to track employees and hold people accountable who are not working the hours they're supposed to be working.
Right, it's to, it's to pay them an honest, it's to pay them an honest wage for the hours that are worked. So I guess what I'm asking is, do we think we have leakage in the system? If we have leakage, meaning people are saying they're working hours that they're not working, or they're giving inaccurate information, I understand that we don't know exactly what that is, but do we think that's one percent, two percent, three percent? When this has been implemented in other municipalities, right? What have they found the differential is before the system was input versus after the system was input? That's really my question. What can we expect to see for the funds that we expend here?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, the issue is, you're asking to do an analysis, but we have no baseline data.
Sure, well, what of other towns? Did you do it in other towns?
I've worked in six towns.
Right, did you ever implement this before?
I have.
And what did you see in terms of the results after implementation versus before? That's all.
I had a high confidence that we were paying people appropriately after we implemented.
Right, but what did the, what happened with the number of hours reported? What was the differential? Did you have a differential?
No. No, if we're paying people for thirty-five hours now, and the time system, after you put it in, pays them thirty-five hours, there's no cost savings. The savings is the concern that in fact, they're not working thirty-five hours, and how much are we getting beat out of that exercise, where now, at least if we have a system, we have some accountability.
So there was no differential? Between what we're, between what they were paying?
Uh, I do watch, you don't understand your question.
Or is there no metric? Or is there no metric to discern it?
So it also tracks vacation time. So for example, if a department had booked in for vacation, you know, it, we know that someone was on vacation, or they weren't. As you know, our town has paid off, out a significant amount of money to employees who have either retired or were terminated, uh, based on vacation time. And it's come to our attention over the past year that there's no tracking of any of this. So no one really knows, except for the person just saying, oh yeah, I didn't take any of that vacation time. So with this tracking system, it allows us to have a better understanding of who's here and when they're here. And it's, it's overall just being physically responsible and good stewards of taxpayers' money. Also, there's an accountability factor that people, you know, have to, are being paid for when they are actually here.
And, you know, it's, there's-
Other towns are doing it, we should be doing it. And we did have this-
So, so that, that, that implies that we could be paying people for vacation that, uh, is inaccurate because it hasn't been tracked, right? Or it hasn't been tracked in a system, right?
Correct, it was not ever been tracked.
So that in, in, go ahead.
Just, yeah, because I, I, I'm not trying to look to not give some kind of data that would be useful. I know, for example, I think there's a white paper that was put out by Kronos that addresses some of this, they, um, the studies that they've done on their own, wouldn't be specific to us, but there is some analysis that they do that was, you know, they're trying to sell you product. So they're, they're, they're trying to sell you a product, so obviously, they're going to show that it saves money.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, I mean, that's exactly what I'm trying to look for. I know we don't have data specific to us, but I'm looking for, and it doesn't have to be Kronos, but it has to be, you know, you've been to six different towns. Other towns have implemented that type thing, right? We're dropping a lot of money on software. I'm not saying it's a wrong thing to do, but we're increasing our ongoing expense, and I'm trying to figure out what type of efficiencies are we getting out of it. That's all. It can be anecdotal information that, hey, other towns did this and realized that on an annual basis, they were under-tracking vacation by two percent, right? Uh, you know, they were under-tracking sick, sick time by this. Or they understood that, you know, the number of hours worked weren't really what had been reported under the old system, right? Thing, things of that sort that show, you know, you put in a software system to track timeliness and accu, uh, accuracy and speed. So how does this help us be more accurate, and how does this speed up and make us more efficient? That's all I'm trying to get to, because this is a significant amount of money that we're going to drop on an annual basis here, at this point. And by the way, I'm not at all implying it's a bad thing. I think it's a good thing. I'm just trying to get to more specifics on what our expectation is. So when you, you're going to come back before us to implement this and sign the contract, right?
I don't, you know, I don't know the process here, so I-
No, wasn't it already funded? Didn't we fund it in the last?
It's funded already.
Yeah, we funded in the last budget, Tom.
So what's this fifty-one?
That's the software, estimated software cost.
Is, well, is it software, or is it the, is it the annual license fee?
It's thirty-five, I think is the estimate.
Is the annual license fee?
Yeah, that's just our guess of what it'll be approximately.
So, the, so, so it was funded this year, but we have done nothing with it yet, right? So we haven't signed a contract with it yet.
We haven't, we haven't put out an RFP yet.
Right, I think the RFP will result in a contract, right?
I assume so, yeah.
Yeah, so if it, if it does, it's got to come back before the Board of Selectment, I think.
Want to ask a town?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. Thank you.
You know, I was just making the comment, and, and for me, you know, Tom used the word anecdotal. I mean, I think that's, you know, even if we could hear that, I know in the private sector, it's, it's just par for the course. At, at my job, we use Bamboo HR and it tracks our days off and our time, you know, all, all of that is good information. It's a good metric, and that accountability moving forward, I think is going to be important, and it may give us data that we don't yet have, but, you know, to Tom's point, I just think that it's important that we, people understand the rationale behind it and understand it without any kind of defensiveness, or, because it is a good thing to support, and it's a good thing to have in place, and I think it's good for department heads to be able to use for employees, and, and so, so for me, in theory, it's a good idea, just, I think it's the, uh, it, it's the rationale and the understanding of why we're doing it. Not that, and again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Flynn, not that we should or we shouldn't, because I think we're both saying it's a good idea. So.
Correct, hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just, I would just point out this. The, the single biggest problem you have is not, and I appreciate that people want to have metrics and, and do an analysis. The single biggest problem is if you have a wage and hour audit, we do not have records that would indicate what somebody works. Without those records, the way the state wage and hour division works is, they take the employee's word for what hours they worked.
Yep.
No, wait, great.
If there's no other reason, if there's no other reason than that, we should put a system in. Because right now, the town is exposed, uh, to the inability to defend itself in a wage and hour complaint.
And I think it's a great metric to have for moving forward. You know, I say, I, it's, this is not about looking back. I think it's about, you know, again, part of that modernization, so I, I think that's all.
Yep.
I, I don't think questioning the why of it.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing for me, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, what do we have next?
Yeah, come on up. You want to do it, uh, Jalen or Jared?
Um, just, I do have a five, a five PM hard out based on what was, or planned, so I just hope that's okay.
All right, he's just going to talk a little bit about this, and then, um, then we'll wrap it up.
I'm just going to talk in, uh, in generalities about the contingency. Um, the idea is to set some funds aside for future contracts to get settled, un, current unsettled contracts. And so, we have, um, put an amount in there, uh, that we think, uh, and, uh, hope to be sufficient to cover the settlement of future contracts. And you can see the amount, the, so the amount is on page one hundred.
I think, um,
We have-
I think as far as this contingency, Jared, um, which I appreciate you talking to, I think, um, it's appropriate that maybe, and, and it doesn't have to be now, but maybe we go into private executive session and you talk a little bit about the calculation of the contingency, um, when you can.
Yep. We can do that in the future.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't know if you have a question, but.
Agreed, yeah, that's why I didn't want to go into it, to be-
Yeah, totally understandable.
Um, we can go on to the contribution, the surplus. The, it's just, it's just pretty straightforward. Currently, we have an eleven point, uh, four, uh, our, our surp, our, uh, excuse me, our, the contribution to our fund balance. Um, right, right now, we're at about eleven point four, and so what we're doing with this additional money that you see on page one oh one, uh, two point two million dollars, is to keep it at that level. So this is a- So this is a, kinda do no harm, hold harmless amount that we're putting in here. So it will increase the amount that we have in there, which, um, I believe will go up to about 36 and a half million with this contribution, uh, between there and 37 million, which will be the, the most that we've had in there in the history of the town.
And can you, um, again, explain a little bit just for people listening in for the record? The, and it moves forward, last year, it, is it, it moves forward, right? So, that's why it zeroes out, my understanding? I'm just looking, sorry, I'm looking as I'm asking my question. Um, what kinds of expenses would be used for that 2.2, for instance?
No, so this is a, this is essentially an appropriation of money that would go into the, uh, into the town's fund balance as a, as a reserve for the town. It doesn't, uh, unless, unless the boards decide, it doesn't get spent on, on anything. It's there in case we have, uh, an issue.
What happens is, yeah, it's a reserve.
Yeah.
So let me, yeah, let me take a, take a shot at this. Um, in order to keep our AAA bond rating, and in fact, it's good for any town, you need to have cash held in a reserve in case something unforeseen happens. It's your savings account. Uh, in order to keep our AAA bond rating in a, in a, uh, state such as Connecticut that's based on property taxes, that's in the northeast and subject to hurricanes and things like that, and has the issues that the state has fiscally, we need to keep a certain percentage of our annual budget in, uh, a reserve, in cash. Uh, that percentage, we've held at about a little over 11, just a smidge over 11% for the past several years. The Board of Finance will reconstitute their Fund Balance Committee, which will go back out into the marketplace and work with, uh, our outside advisors to tell us whether that 11% is appropriate, or whether that should be raised or lower, depending on what's going on with the rating agencies and in the market. Um, so the, that's under their purview, but this was established a number of years ago as the budget continued to grow, but our reserves didn't keep pace. So the policy was passed by the Board of Finance that each year, uh, when the budget is raised, we need to main, at least maintain, meaning quote-unquote, "do no harm," to that reserve as a percentage of the budget.
Right.
And that's what it was for.
So, and I'm looking back at fiscal year 18, 19, it was, you know, in 18, it was 538, and 19. And understanding that in fiscal year 20, it was 1.3, it's a bi, it's a big jump, so we still, this still counts. Is there a reason that it makes sense to jump the 900,000? And I get it.
Yeah. Well, what it does, Nancy, is it just keeps us at the 11% rate, a little over 11%.
Which, again, arguable, and it will go to the Board of Finance if we have the appetite to, to make it a little bit lower, closer to 10, or just, but
I, I, I wouldn't say, in, in my perspective, it's not quote-unquote "arguable", um, but you're absolutely right. It goes to the Board of Finance, and then they can review it from their, uh, prerogative uh, in order to keep us in, in line with credit rating expectations, et cetera.
Yeah, and again, I think just publicly, like, the, the nuance in all of this stuff, people don't understand. They're just gonna see this big nugget for a thing that's like, you know, what people will see is the rainy day account. And I know that's not what it is, but, um, just to be able to, uh, have language that really explains it is helpful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Understood. It, there's nobody out there lobbying for the fund balance, right? That, that's really what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions there?
No.
What's next on the list? Do we have?
I would respectfully, I know that we talked about a 5 o'clock hard out. I have a work call that I scheduled to 5:00 because of it, so if it's possible to carry this over to tomorrow.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, excuse me. Tomorrow, we're gonna start at 11:00 AM, uh, to accommodate, Mr. Flynn has some, um, work
Thank you.
And so, we, we'll do, we start at 11:00, and let's plan for a 1 o'clock break. And I think, I mean, let's just take 40 minutes, if that works for everybody.
It does.
Okay, and then
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
I would even say 30, 30 minutes is fine, if we wanna even bargain a little further.
Sure, that's fine, too.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that as well.
So we'll start at 11:00, and then we'll break at 1:00. We have to, but we're gonna be starting with some items, if you notice the agenda, and then we'll go to the education, um, budget presentation.
That's fine.
All right.
Great. Thank you for all the work today.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Do we have to make a motion to close or anything?
Uh, yeah, make, um, a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, so moved.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all very much.
All right.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.